Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
I declare a quorum. Next is approval of minutes, meeting minutes, January ninth, 2013. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next is report and recommendation, CDC recommendations regarding three sixty-three Irving Park Road special, three sixty-five East Irving Park Road special use permit. John, Jennifer, whoever's?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really don't have much of a presentation on this. We made the presentation to the Community Development Commission, which they considered and they did make a recommendation to approve the special use. And then Jennifer did prepare a memo to the PCB Committee. It was discussed at the January ninth meeting, I believe. The staff recommendation, pretty much the same as it was at that time. So really, I believe the petitioner is here. He may want to speak, but unless, you know, anybody on the council has any questions, you know, all the information is pretty much contained in the memos that are in your packet.
Alderman Lozaro. John, this has been a warehouse for how long?
Well, this particular section of the building has been used as a warehousing or fabrication function for a long time, probably as long as I can remember. Originally-
Twenty years, thirty years?
Probably at least thirty years.
So if this warehouse doesn't function as a warehouse, what other use is there for it?
Well, the landlord would, I mean, part of the issue we have at this particular property is that the property is non-conforming as far as its parking. It's, there's just really no parking on site. So the previous tenants and the previous businesses that have been in there have used the entire first floor for retail sales. There was a printer in there. He used the front for his office. He used the back where he had the print, printing
But it was still used in the warehouse.
Correct. I believe at one time there was a sheet metal fabricator in there. There was a wrought iron fabricator. Then, of course, a few years ago, you guys approved the special use for the motorcycle shop, so.
Can I continue, Art?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Lozaro.
So was this a zoned warehouse at one time and now it changed?
It was not zoned for warehouse per se. We did, I mean, the CDC did change, or the, I'm sorry, the UDO did change the zoning in that district, but the older zoning ordinance was a little more liberal as far as storage. And typically, even in the business zonings, if you have accessory storage to your main use, that's typically allowable, as long as it's not, you know, hazardous materials or something like that. But it can be an accessory used to the main use.
Okay, and we, and we saw that it passed our inspection as what it is right now, if we allow this gentleman to lease this with his lawnmowers and stuff.
We did inspect the shop twice, once announced and once unannounced.
And?
I mean, what's in the warehouse right now is as he's presented. It's, you know, lawnmowers, it's equipment. There's two Bobcats in there.
Is it hazardous? Is this hazardous?
In our opinion, if the warehouse function is used the way it is, was during the inspection, no, it does not create hazardous condition. It's not unsafe.
All right, well, I mean, I see no reason why this shouldn't be used as such. Thank you for your answers. Alderman Jacob.
I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is, what is our policy when we find some, something is being done that shouldn't be done? You know, I know we held off on collecting the fine, but as far as I'm concerned, if you're breaking the rules, whether we all say yes or no, it doesn't matter. You should still pay a fine and a penalty for doing what you shouldn't be doing. Do we have some kind of policy on this when the situation arises?
John, before, not to cut you off, but before you, we get into this, I know that the owners of the building are here with some other people. Did they want to put on or present something? I don't want to have this-
I believe they did, yes.
Okay, so maybe we should go through that first, because that may or may not answer some of the questions?
Sure.
So if you will, if you'd step up and give your name and address and-
Yes, I'm Joe Toulon here with the building, along with my mother Sylvia. We've owned the building for six years and there were some questions last time that I felt it was more appropriate that I have the potential tenant here to answer any questions or any concerns. I had stated before that there was no problem as far as any hazardous material. I have a son who lives in the building. I wouldn't want anything that would be remotely hazardous to anyone, let alone my son who lives and resides in the building. The tenant is Marco Dugo. He owns Marco Dugo Landscaping. You know, I'm going to let him explain, but one of the things he does is he has, he is not looking to start a new business and looking in Wooddale. Most of his business that he does is outside the city limits of Wooddale, not even close. Okay, he has other contracts in various areas and I don't want to get into his business, but he is not planning on doing any business in Wooddale, and I'm going to let him explain some of the things that he wanted to bring to light to the committee.
Good evening. Well, the reason why-
Can you first give us your full name and address?
Sure, Marco Dugo. I'm currently residing in Itasca, and that is the reason why I chose Wooddale to have this storage area. The reason for having this area is just primarily for spare parts and equipment that is not in use. I have no need for parking as my trucks do not come anywhere in DuPage. My business is mostly in the city and being that I live in Itasca, I take Irving Park straight down. So if I don't have a spare part in storage, I could stop at one of my suppliers, which is also on Irving Park, on my way to work. It's just a location of convenience. There's no repairs or anything going on there as it is not my primary location. My primary location is in Mount Prospect. Another one is in Displanes and another one is in the city. So this is just a convenient location for me to pick up a spare part and take it to wherever it needs to go.
Now, if you want to ask your question, Alderman Jacob.
On Forest, though, but again, what is, what, do we have a policy in place?
It's been my experience in all the time I've been here that, and let me just give you a quick, this occupancy, this warehouse occupancy was discovered by staff. You know, the tenant had moved in without our knowledge. When it was discovered, he was written a citation for, I'm sorry, when he was discovered in there, we had him apply for a business license. He applied for the business license. The business license was rejected and a citation was subsequently issued for him occupying the space without the business license and for a use that it was not allowable without having a special use granted. Typically, as I say, it's been my experience, and this has been, unfortunately, the city attorney's not here, but it's also been supported by this city attorney and also the city's previous city attorney, that once a citation is issued, but the person that gets the citation, if they're working on resolving the issue, be it they come in for special use or for a variation, enforcement of that citation is put on hold until the issue is resolved. I mean, if they're creating an unsafe condition, you know, that has to be dealt with immediately. But if it's not an unsafe condition or a hazardous condition, typically, that person is allowed to get the issue resolved one way or another before we move forward with prosecution on the citation.
Alderman Jacob.
Guess I understand that, but again, I mean, if we wouldn't have found this, it still would be going on and we wouldn't know about it. So, and that's why I'm saying maybe we need to, you know, or I need to check with the attorney, but I think irregardless of our decision, if there's, should be a fine, there should be a fine and they should have to pay it. I mean, they were doing something that they shouldn't have been doing. They didn't have the permits. They didn't have the business license, so we can't just let people do this and then all of a sudden we catch them and then, well, then we're here trying to, you know, do, get a special use.
I agree with you. And once this issue is resolved one way or the other, I mean, we still plan on going forward. You know, we'll take the matter to court and have the judge make a decision on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment at least and then a question. One, two, Alderman Lozaro brought up some good questions, and I think part of the issue is not so much that there's some ancillary storage as in that the building's being carved up and they're really not even legal spaces. So that's like taking any other building and dicing it up into four units and saying, well, now I want special use. The building was never really designed for that. I mean, it's really a single user building for the most part. That's the bigger issue. And then under our ordinances, in order to get the special use variance, I think one of the things is it's necessary, they're desirable to provide a service or facility which is in the interest of the, best interest of the public, you know. I don't see how dicing up the building and renting it out as warehouse space. And there is other warehouse space off of Irving Park Road. You know, I don't, just, I don't see the hardship to grant the, the variance for this. That being said, Frank, did you have another?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Alderman Lozaro. Thank you. They were saying that you didn't get a business license when you first moved in?
I applied for one. I got rejected.
You got rejected? Why did he get rejected?
Because the warehouse use is not an allowable use in the C2 zoning without a special use being granted. It's allowable as a special use, but he has to go through the procedure first.
Okay, but you didn't apply until after we caught him?
Correct.
So why didn't you apply?
I wasn't aware that I had to, because most businesses, most villages don't even require a business license for landscapers. And for me, I was just renting a storage spot, so I was unaware that I needed to apply.
You know, okay, you know, ignorance isn't-
It's not justifiable.
Right, right. Okay, well, thanks. That was being honest. Alderman Roy Wesley.
You say you live in Itasca. Have you looked in Itasca for warehouse space for yourself?
No, I have not.
Okay, that's the first question. The second question is, you said you have locations in Mount Prospect and Displanes?
Yes, sir.
Which is north.
That's correct.
So I take your supply house, your parts, where you get your parts would probably be Russo's Power Equipment if you had to buy parts or whatever. So if you stop for spare parts and are these parts that you have in this place now, is it, is it on the mowers already and you're taking them off the mowers or do you buy parts and store it? And why won't you store it at Mount Prospect or Displanes?
These are parts that I have refurbished that were previously in use and that I reuse as needed. There's, to me, makes no sense if I have something to go buy it all over again.
Okay, the second part of the question was about Mount Prospect and Displanes.
Yes.
Do you not have storage in those locations?
Those location, the Mount Prospect facility is strictly a repair location for my personal use and that location, the only storage that I have there is fertilizer, which is stored in an outside container. And the Displanes location is already to its max capacity. There's not much more I could put in there.
Okay. Have, one more question.
Well- Alderman Roy Wesley.
Have you looked in our industrial park for storage instead of right on Irving Park?
Well, I just happened to see this location. I did not know how it was zoned when I originally saw the location. Then again, another reason why I wanted to find an indoor space was, I'm sure everybody's aware that in the past few years, there's been a lot of theft, break-ins into landscape trailers. I was a victim of that five times. So it got to the point where I understood that it wasn't safe to keep equipment in trailers anymore when they're not being used.
You're, so the parts are still on the machines then?
Some.
Okay.
Most of them are not.
So the machines are still operable or?
No, they're not.
None?
None, no. There's a few machines that are working machines and that are just stored and other machines that are not in use anymore and that are just used for spare parts.
Okay.
Alderman Peter Jacob.
This is more of a comment, but prior to me being an alderman, I was on the Community Development Commission. And we spent many, many months rezoning, doing rezoning with the UDO, and we all sit up here as aldermen and our goal is to make this a more user, more of a downtown area. And if we keep allowing special uses for warehouses, we're never going to get to where we want to be. So, thank you.
I have one, one question for the owners or the renters. And everything prior, you know, this is going to be not really used, but everything that you said today, it sounds like it's going to be more active than was, we were previously led to believe, you know, the statement that it's on the way on Irving, you can grab parts. The answer to the question that the parts are still on the machine, which would obviously then require you to take them off the machine and do some work. So this isn't just going to be, you know, put something in there and come back in six months, take it out and put something else in. I think you'd have to agree that it's going to be a little more active than that. Am I correct in that assumption?
Sir, if I may, I'm never in, I'm in there, I would say, once every two weeks. I'm never on the location. I'm never on site unless I absolutely need to grab something, but it's an in and out thing, or unless I'm putting stuff where it belongs, trying to make shelves or, you know, just putting stuff away. But otherwise, I am never in there.
Well, but it also sounds like, I mean, you got a pretty good business if you've got a place in Mount Prospect, Displanes, and then in the city, and this would make four. That's a pretty healthy business, which, congratulations. But that would make it more active. So whether you're going in there or one of your guys workings going in there, it sounds like there's going to be more activity.
No, sir. I'm the only one. It's either me or my brother going in there. And again, it's very, very occasional.
Alderman Winger.
Mr. Forrest, can you give examples of what business would be ideal for this under normal, under the existing conditions, not applying for a special use on this landlocked building and under the current zoning? That would be able to thrive and do well there?
With the way the, the building has been subdivided over the years, I mean, the existing space that this gentleman is occupying couldn't, not really be used for retail space because there's no, you know, there's just one single man door that goes in and out. There's really no parking available. Previously, the occupants of the first floor, like the front of the building, where there have been retail uses, have had the entire space and they've made use of the rear.
And it didn't last?
No, I mean, there really are no uses for that section of the building.
And, and I've seen it come and go over the years and to me, this is the, one of the only types of uses we can do with this building. It's ideal that we stick exactly to what we drafted a couple of years ago, but there are exceptions and that's what this process is here today, what we're doing. And until we redesign that area or the building's flattened, this is probably the most practical use for the landowner. That's why I am going to support the request. Thank you.
Let me just go back to that. Again, if that was a space that's been a heating contractor, there's plenty of businesses that would rent the whole space. Now, is the rental market good or not? I don't know. But again, we're into, that's really not a legal space. It's not like you took the Sherwin Williams building and put a partition wall down the center of it and rented out unit A and B. This is not only not in the right zoning, it's not even conforming for a business. I mean, I don't even know how we allow them a business license to operate out of the back of a garage attached to the back of a building somewhere that has no real ingress or egress to that building. I mean, those are the issues. I understand what you're saying. I'm not here to beat up the business owner, but I'm also here to carry out, A, what the city said is their direction of things to do and then listening to or reading what it is necessary to comply with to get the special use. And I don't feel, if you read all those things, that this meets that, and that's why I wouldn't support it. Alderman Jacob.
John, question for you. You say something about section fourteen, seventeen point four oh three G2. It says if the tenant moves out of the space and another tenant does not move in within sixty day, the special use becomes null and void. So let's say we allow this and somebody does come in, he moves out, another tenant moves in as warehouse, so then it's still legal?
Well, you would also have the latitude, I don't have my UDO with me, but I believe the paragraph prior to this says, allows you the latitude that says, once this particular tenant would move out, that special use dies, period. Another warehouse user could not be reestablished without having to come back for another special use consideration.
Okay, and this just seems to contradict that because it just talks about the, within sixty days. So that's the reason I was asking. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I'm just finding it hard to believe. I have a landscaping business myself. I'm finding it hard to believe that if you break apart on a lawnmower and you're going to go to your stock or whatever, that you're only going to be there once or twice a week on the size business you have. I have one trailer and not too many mowers and I'm constantly getting parts too.
Well, that's, that's the reason why I have other locations. This particular location, most of the parts that I have at this location are destined to, to the city group, not in this area. So they don't break every day. My machines are fairly new.
I understand.
So I try to keep them on, you know, so.
I understand.
And nowadays with the prices of parts, if you're in the business, I'm sure you can relate.
Alderman Mike Sizmarsky.
I'm going to make a motion to pass the special use purpose for three sixty-five Irving Park Road.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Sizmarsky made a motion to approve the special use-
Special use permit.
Seconded by Alderman Lozaro. Can we call the roll call?
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Motion fails. Next is items to be considered at future meetings. Recapture agreements in February. Medical marijuana cultivation and distribution centers in February. Bond approval for tree planting Irving Park Road in February. Is that for the tree planting that we talked about at Streetscape, Jennifer?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
A move.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I mentioned, I think it lasted committee meeting, when are we going to talk about Front Street?
That will probably, in fact, it will be on one of the February committee meetings. The building owners have been presented with the contracts. We had a meeting with the city attorney last week to discuss a couple of questions that they had. So as soon as they are ready to sign the agreements, then we'll bring that to committee.
Even if it's in March or whatever, could we put it on the sheet here so I, I don't care when, as long as I-
It was in the stats report that it was coming forward. I know it should be on here. We'll put it on here.
Right.
All right, if you can make sure. Okay, I have a, Alderman, I guess I don't, Alderman Jacob.
Just, I'd like to put on the agenda for future meetings to discuss the policy of something similar to the serving park happening of what, how we handle the situation as far as fines and going to court and et cetera.
John, can you, whatever that is in writing, if you could put that on there. Alderman Winger.
Why do we have to discuss it? Mr. Forrest, you told us how it works and as long as there's no hazard taking place, we instruct the operation to go through their process. And in this case, they applied for the business permit, then got it, and now they're going through those stages. So I believe we're handling it correctly. What do we want to address in that conversation?
Well, first, were they in the building before they applied for the license and they applied for the license after somebody came by? That's the first question.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so they already occupied the building illegally, didn't apply the license, only applied for the license because they got caught?
Correct.
Or somebody, or somebody pointed out to them, you know, if they didn't know that they needed to be done, so.
And I would imagine that that occasionally happens regardless of what, and we do have a procedure for handling it, correct?
Yes, as much as we would like to be all-knowing and all-seeing, this does happen occasionally. Typically, these people at some point in time will get uncovered and caught and typically a citation is issued. The reason that it gets put on hold is if they are working towards, if they're following the steps to resolve the issue and we appear in court and they explain that to the judge, the judge will continue the case and kind of give us the evil eye as to why are you wasting my time until this gets resolved one way or the other. So that's sort of why it works that way.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I, if Mr. Jacobs would like to talk about the procedure of how we're doing this and, and how we're going about it, I'm going to be in favor with it to go along and change the policies or whatever we may have to do on how we do it. That's what we're up here for, is changing policies. So that's our job. So let's talk about it and if there's changes that need to be done, then we do it. If the council doesn't feel like it, then we don't do it.
Okay, so you have that. Yes, Matt. So I have a motion, I have a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taker, note that the same people are here. I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes from the meeting from January ninth, 2014. That is my motion. I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, anybody? Yeah, but I said all in favor and nobody said anything, so.
For the minute, taker, note that Mike has left the building.
He's left the building?
Yes.
He might have left.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought maybe just one's a bit. All right. I'm going to try it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
That passes. Report and recommendation, Morton Salt, Inc., additional funds for road deicing salt in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
I'll second the motion. Forward, please.
Well, I do have a question, though. Do you think, you think that's enough? Do you think, you think that's enough? Are we going to be back here next week?
Well, as of right now, we're not going to be here next week for the pure fact that in consultation with Morton Salt, to get them to allow us to ask for four hundred tons of salt, which is a non, which is only subject to availability, we're not guaranteed four hundred tons of salt to come back and ask for more salt in the future. We basically had to beg Morton to give us the opportunity to purchase four hundred tons of salt. So right now, salt is at a premium, and it's not, we can't just run out and buy salt. So as of right now.
Right. Is there any, anything else that we can use if for some reason we run out of salt?
Sand.
Sand?
We can use sand. Sand is only for traction. Sand doesn't do anything with ice. Sand doesn't do anything with, with snow removal. So to continue to do things that we've been doing for the last three weeks, the conservation of salt. We feel that with the amount of salt that we're going to be able to receive on hand, if we do get this whole four hundred tons of salt, we should be in pretty good shape.
Okay, you know, last year, we didn't know what to do with salt, no. Eugene Wesley.
My, my question here, far concerned on, on salt purchase, it shouldn't come to council. It should be a staff's decision. It should went to emergency purchase. Because now we, we approving it tonight, in the meantime, Morton's waiting for us to make the final decision up here as the council.
Yeah, but do they have that authority to do that? It's over.
This would fall under emergency purchase.
Public safety.
Public safety, so it's emergency purchase.
Yeah.
And then bring it to us later. But the whole point is now, we approving it tonight, in committee, now we can't, now they can't move forward to it until it goes to council on February sixth.
I'll let Jeff rebuttal that. Go ahead, Jeff.
They only are going to let us order a hundred tons at a time, okay? I already ordered a hundred tons. When we get it, I don't know. But the hundred tons is less than ten thousand dollars, so I already ordered that. So even if it wasn't emergency, and I wanted to order four hundred tons, it wouldn't matter not because they're not giving us the four hundred tons.
So we already have this order.
Just to come to you, we've already placed the order for a hundred. That's all they're going to give us anyway.
But what I'm trying to bring up here is we sitting here to approve four hundred tons down the line for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, the point is, if we approve it and we could get the four hundred tons, he's not going to call Morton Salt and says, we want the four hundred tons, because it's got to be approved now in February sixth at the council meeting.
So you're only saying is you should have, it should have been an emergency call.
That's what I'm saying. You're waiting two weeks.
All right, all right, all right. Gotcha.
It doesn't matter. They're not going to give us the salt anyway.
Well, he was just, it sounds like he's saying, just go ahead and purchase it under the emergency rule that it's public safety. We're going to move on on that. Go ahead, unless you're going to say the same thing. Go ahead, Art.
If they're not going to give us the salt over the hundred tons, I mean, what, what are you approving?
Go ahead, Jeff.
In case they decide to give us the salt.
So we have the money there.
So if they did decide to give it to you, you still have the power to buy the salt. I think that's the point he was making. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, let's just take a vote on it, guys, because it's.
I got one question for.
All right, go ahead, Roy.
Matt, a couple of years ago, they had this product called Magic Saw that they spray, that it would last longer on the roads than regular saw. I've seen some towns use it in Indiana, and it's worked pretty good. Have you ever heard of it?
I have not. I have not heard of that product currently.
They come out and spray it?
Currently, it's not a, an item that we're, we've been utilizing here. And the, the salt product that we are getting from Morton is basically all they have left.
I.
And I've called several other salt manufacturer or salt distributing bulk houses. We are on one waiting list. One person won't call me back, and the other three people I talked to basically laughed when I called them.
Matt, how much do we have left, and how far do you think that will carry us right now?
We have approximately a hundred and thirty tons of salt in our salt dome and on our trucks right now. A hundred and thirty tons of salt will be approximately four full runs of our municipality. But over the last twenty-two days of this month, when we started our salt conservation efforts during the last, the big storm that we had at the beginning of the month that went to the temperature, we were plowing for twenty-six straight hours, and then temperature plummeted after that in polar vortex number one. We had started this conservation effort. We have used approximately, I would, I would guess between twenty-five and thirty tons of salt since the beginning of this month. So having a hundred and thirty tons might seem like a lot, but it won't last very long if we just willy-nilly put salt down all over the town. Weather reports are showing that the possibility of up to sixty inches of snowfall, twenty more, twenty more inches of snow to happen in the next thirty-five days. So we felt it prudent to go to this conservation effort and to keep as much salt as we have. Because we all know that March is going to come around. We're going to at least have one or two ice storms, that that salt is going to be what we need to have. And we need to be able to, to wait and have that when we, when we need it. A little bit of snowpack on the streets, whereas it may not be the most, might not be the best thing aesthetically. It is safe, safer than having black ice on the streets, and that's what we're working towards right now.
Peter.
Just a couple of things, Matt. I talked to Matt today about this, and maybe if we could just explain to the citizens why we are conserving, because a lot of citizens don't know, and they think we're just not putting salt out, out on the streets. So maybe if you could tell them what, what the most important things are, so that they could see, you know, as they're watching this, they could understand why we are conserving.
Basically, the purpose of, the purpose of salt is to help eliminate ice and water from the, from the street surface. Some of the issues that we've had is the snowfall followed by long periods of extreme cold. Salt doesn't work below about five degrees on the roadway. So what we're doing right now is trying to elongate the amount of salt that we have. Basically, we're rationing. Think of yourself in an emergency, and you don't have very much water left. You don't sit there and drink a gallon of water on day one if all you got is a gallon of water left. So you take a sip here and a sip there. So that's basically what we're trying to do. Currently, our program is to, is to spread the salt on hills where safety concerns come, curves, which would help people go around them safer, and at intersections where people are stopping. So that is what we're going, that's what we have been doing for the last three weeks, and that's what Public Works and administration has come up with that we're going to continue to do until the fact, till the time that we either have an abundance of salt or, or we are done with the snow season. So currently, as of right now, we are in rationing mode.
And, you know, one more question, and then I really want to just call us to vote. But you're saying just in case, sand would be our next option?
Well, sand is only for traction. Sand is not for melting of ice.
Well, no, I realize that, but.
So that is, sorry, so that is why we're really trying to save the salt back for the ice situation, for the icing situations. A little bit of snowpack. I was out today on a street that had some snow cover. When I accelerated and slammed on the brakes, I did feel the tires gripping on the snowpack, which was allowing me to stop. So basically, a little bit of snowpack works the same as, works the same as sand would.
Okay, so one more comment. Alderman Jacob.
Well, thank you, first of all, for explaining that to the citizens, because I've had a few complaints that the streets aren't being done. So that helps them understand what we're doing. The only other thing I'd like to bring up is that at some point, I think we really need to possibly look into a salt dome. I know we already looked into that in the past, and, but I think we may need to bring that up again, because to me, this is a public safety issue, and I think we should always have extra salt on hand, and if we had a dome, maybe we wouldn't be in this situation. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a, do we have someone make a motion? Was that me?
Yeah.
And then who seconded? Okay, so let's.
You said, wait a minute, and you seconded, because you wanted a question.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to recommend funds for road icing salt and not to exceed amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Or seventy-six dollars.
Second.
Do we need roll call, or all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings. Stream bank stabilizing, stabilization in February, cleanup day February, South Cedar streetlights February, school streetlights in February, intersection safety improvements, phase three construction supervision contract in February. Any like to add something? Eugene?
I ask one question. Since we starting the CIP tonight, could we go back to South Cedar? How many streetlights were there, requests were?
Matt?
I believe it was a two-streetlight project, two, two, or three at the most.
And may I do a follow-up?
Go ahead, Eugene.
Because we're going, it's going to be on CIP tonight. And the school street?
Uh, it, that was two. It was two.
School street was two? South Cedar was two or one?
Two or three, I believe. I believe, I believe it was two, possibly a three.
One?
I thought they only want it, one on South Cedar.
It's a pretty long run for only one streetlight, so, I mean, one, one's fine. That'll be at committee next week.
Again, going back to our rules, if they don't want it, I think the request was only for one at the end of the street.
Okay.
That's my understanding. Maybe we can double check.
That's fine. Will, yeah, we'll check into that.
Anything else, guys? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Hey, here we go, guys.
All right. Anyone need a break really quick, or get something to drink? We could?
Aye.
I'll follow finance committee order. I will let the minute taker know that the same people are present. I need a motion approved on January ninth, two thousand thirteen.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Abstain, one abstains. Okay, the next item will be reported recognition for CIP. Brad, are you taking the CIP, or is, is sidekick there? Okay. So does everyone have a copy of CIP? Did I? Did, did we get our CIP? Are they on the Dropbox? Are they in the packets? I just want to make sure I'm the one that's got. You? Jeff, you don't happen to have an extra copy of CIP lying around, do you? All right. So, uh, go ahead, Brad. Start out with the CIP.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as we've done, I think this is the fifth year now, the five-year planning of the capital for the city of Wooddale. Two weeks ago, you all got the seventy-page booklet detailing.
Is your presentation going to go along with the same pages in the book?
Yes.
Sometimes we have that computer.
The, the presentation, actually, your books were printed from this presentation, so. Page eight is that page. So we'll walk you through some, some quick high-level items regarding the plan, and then we'll get into the individual project sheets with any questions, comments, et cetera, as we go along. So on page eight of the booklet, paginated at the bottom, this is a, it's a very high-level summary of all the expenses. And we break down the plan into four category types. Transportation, which includes streets, sidewalks, and then we put the storm sewer conveyance in there. And I believe those are the three big ones that are in there. Buildings and grounds, you know, maintenance of this building, grounds of the building. So the facilities of the city miscellaneous, it's kind of the catch-all for something that doesn't fit in the other two, such as there's some IT stuff in there, forestry items are in there, a couple other items are in there as well. And then water and sewer, which is pretty self-explanatory of what constitutes water and sewer, capital and infrastructure. So if we go on to the next page, the top half of the next page is the cash flow pro forma for the general capital projects fund, which includes the transportation, buildings and grounds, and miscellaneous section. And it just, it flows down, so we have the projected beginning cash balance of four hundred eighty-two thousand and change as of May one, coming up. And then go through the estimated revenues. There's a couple grants in there. Then the, the double underline ending cash balance is where we project to end the year at. And then that number slides up and becomes the beginning balance of the next year. So it kind of snakes along as you go through. The bottom half of this page is this exact same presentation except for the water and sewer portion of it. And then again, the grant, this is, we called it glob because blog was already taken, so it's grants, loans, and other bonds. And that's for the treatment plant project, that one there. So we go on to the next page. It's the transportation section. And this is everything that's in that category, and this articulates back to the numbers on page eight. So the first year there, you can see bridge, some storm, stormwater projects, street projects, Elgin-O'Hare, and the Ash Street Crossing safety improvements. Then one addition this year to this page, we did put the page number, so it's easier to find the projects within the document if you have a question about a particular project. Going through the rest of this page, it's the projects for next fiscal year. And then on the following page, page eleven, projects for fiscal seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So what we've done in the past, and what we'd like to do this year again, is primarily focus on the projects this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal fifteen. I mean, obviously, if there's questions on projects in out years, we can touch on those too. But I'd like to certainly get a consensus on the upcoming fiscal year, so that can be put into the budget document that'll be coming to you in mid-February. So at this time, I guess entertain, if it's okay with the chairman, entertain any questions on the transportation section. So it'll only be, you know, from page ten to twenty-four at this time, if, if everybody concurs with that sentiment.
Mr. Woods, do you?
I hate the restrictions, but I think I'm covered. The Forest View, Oakwood, Harvey, Edge, Edgebrook, Potter, Carter. I'm just looking for clarification. We're starting them. I thought we were moving them up to, to follow in right behind doing Royal Oaks. But are we taking off a year? When, when physically are we going to start constructing? This summer in fourteen?
Mr. Murris?
Yeah, which is fiscal fifteen, so I think June, July-ish, because they want to miss some rainy season.
Okay. That was it? Thank you.
That one was on page thirteen, but ten to twenty-four specifically, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Brad, page sixteen, ponds. Basically, those are private ponds. We don't take them over. Why is this in here? I know there's been discussion, but the discussion also includes if we take one, we take them all. I haven't heard any consensus about the city taking over all the ponds.
Mr. Murris?
Mayor's correct. However, with these two ponds, these two ponds seem to be the center of all the council's concerns in relation to ponds and their location at the southern edge of town as a gateway area. And the constant maintenance problem over there is more severe than a lot of the other ponds. So this has been brought up multiple, multiple times that we need to do something about it. And this is our estimation on how much we would need to do if the. And this is our estimation on how much we would need to do if the council decided they wanted to go that route. If not, then there's really no need to talk about it anymore.
Well, you got follow-up?
Yeah, real quick, uh, we have a lot of residents over there behind Georgetown complaining about flooding, and there's a bottleneck going across, going over to that pond that's behind, uh, the jewel and whatnot, I mean. Again, I know we're, we did the citywide storm flooding, and we're starting to address some of the issues, but taking over ponds, so.
Mr. Woods?
I think just to come, I, I mean, I think this is part and parcel of what you're talking about. I mean, we did the, the study, right, to improve some of the storm things, we're gonna do that. And unfortunately, as much as we don't like it, we're gonna have to address some of the ponds. So this happens to be one of the ones that's probably easiest to pick out, probably one of the more economical projects, and has more one-to-one regional benefit, if you will. To my understanding, I don't have all of them memorized.
Well, can I follow up to that?
Sure.
And I understand, and believe me, I agree, but the attorney's gonna give us, we're setting precedents and all this other stuff, I, something we better decide and move cautiously. That's all.
Mr. Murmerts?
This is one, like I said, it's been one of the most problematic, um, it's not like we're taking it over, it's been offered to us in the past, and its location is unique compared to some of the other ones too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask some questions then. Uh, the question is with this pond, there was also some stipulations, and I, and I don't, I don't wanna bring it out here because we had a discussion in the exact session, so I'm not even gonna have a debate out here with it. My question is, and I agree whatever plan we decide, but I think we got some major flooding issues in all awards to correct that before we go ahead and start doing the ponds, cause it's, all it's gonna do is benefit very little for our impact. I'm not in favor of doing this because, you know what, we'll go back to, just because we talked about the pond, all these unfunded projects that's been on the back burner right now, that we keep pushing off, pushing off, and now, tonight, we just had a discussion about bringing the salt dome back up. Before I do the pond, I would rather look at something else than doing all this work, and, and, and I don't know how it got so quick up in the capitals project. Two thousand fifteen, all of a sudden, we talked about last year, and all of a sudden, bang, it's right here. I mean, I, I just don't, I, I'd rather push that back. Mr. Murmerts?
It's the, uh, beauty of local government. You guys get to choose. We've heard this, uh, as a priority many a times, so we plugged it in where we thought we can best plug it in. You guys decide if you wanna do it or not.
Mr. Woods, you have a follow-up?
Well, we can hear from, uh, Mr. Wilson, had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson.
I'm sure, thank you. Um, I'm gonna back up one page, um, both in your books and then also, uh, on the PowerPoint here. This page here is the list of the stormwater projects that, um, a couple of you have alluded to, um, that was in the study. You know, coming up this year, Crestwood and Spruce, next year, Aspen, Central Ethel, Edgewood, Forest Reserve Gilbert, um, eighteen, design of, you know, Miller, nineteen, construction of, uh, drainage issues on Miller. And then in the unprogrammed down at the bottom, it's, you know, the one for Station Park, Potter, um, then a couple areas are in the I and I study, and then, uh, there's a couple other areas that are, that are coming up too. So, you know, for the, the flooding commentary, I mean, there's what, close to five million dollars over the next five years in this stormwater master plan to address just those, uh, those areas listed right there, so. You know, to kind of flush out the commentary on the, the stormwater stuff.
Mr. Woods?
That was the point I was making. We're, we're spending the money once again to do the studies, whether it's the I and I study and the flooding study, we have to move forward with some of the projects, and since we didn't have any projects on the books under those categories, certainly whatever one gets put on there is gonna look like the one that got rushed to the top. So I think we just need to, to move forward with them. I understand what you're saying.
My concern is, yes. It has been brought to our attention, and we do do something about that, but in the long run, we just rattle off areas that should be addressed sooner than worrying about detention ponds. I mean, that is my concern. I mean, let's correct the problem. We did I and I study, it's been going on, and you're right, I don't want it on the books, stay on the shelf, but again, in the I and I study that we did, there's other projects before that that was just been on the touchbox. I understand.
But we are moving forward with projects. Each category has projects moving forward. We can't just abandon all projects in every other category except for I and I and just focus on that, or do focus everything on roads. We have to follow, you know, the infrastructure where it takes us, and unfortunately, that's stormwater issues, infiltration, the treatment plant, roads, water pipes, sewer pipes, et cetera.
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Jacob.
Um, going to page thirteen, the Forest, uh, Forest View Oakwood, um, I'm all for this project, but we just had Trotter here recently, and he didn't really have numbers, and I see numbers in here. Were, were these from Trotter that we haven't heard yet, or?
Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, yeah, these were estimates from, I wanna say about a year ago when they initially, uh, did the baseline study um, of this, so these were carried forward from previous estimates, so.
So let's carry over from last estimate. Go ahead.
Do, I mean, has Trotter, cause they, they were, last time we were here, they were gonna work up some numbers, I mean, did we get those yet? I mean, couldn't we plug those actual numbers in here, or we don't have those yet?
Yeah, to my knowledge, we don't have better numbers than what we have here. These are the same numbers that were in last year's book, and they, they just moved up a year.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, you want your?
Thank you. I just, first I wanna make sure I'm clear, and then I'm gonna make a statement that, um, is this proposed CIP, it does um, account for that one point three million not repaying the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it's pushing that one point three million of activity in fiscal year two thousand fifteen. I'm prepared to vote no then for this plan, and I truly believe that the money should be repaid to the general fund. The reason why we did Royal Oaks all in one year is to save money, so it required borrowing money out of the general fund, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna spend those reserves, then we really need to do projects that the whole community can enjoy. It should really go towards the unfunded projects, whether it's the power lines, whether it's the curtain window that's, oh, God, goodness, eight years maybe, Mr. Forrest, that we've been talking about this. One day I'm gonna come into City Hall and it's just gonna fall, fall through, and uh, so at some point, we need to do these projects that are unfunded and that are community-wide, and to use one point three million dollars from our reserves to do roads a little quicker is, um, I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll chime into that. First off, first off, I was against doing Royal Oaks, yeah, totally, okay? I believe the council decided to take the five million dollars, and, and far I'm concerned, we had this discussion that the reason why we went there, because we would save three hundred some thousand dollars, or five hundred thousand, and that money will be earmarked again for, for this year to do those road projects. So, again, we sat here, and I'll tell one thing, I vote against Royal Oaks by doing it in two phases. So we should, you're saying here today, we should follow the budget that we have for road projects, but we sat here as the council decided to go ahead. So now you got another ward or whatever streets are gonna be suffered because now you're throwing out, we should repay the general fund. Far I'm concerned, that we should repay the general fund because you already overruled it from last year. So if these roads been being pushed back, back and forth so many years because we did a Royal Oaks for five million or whatever, I don't, far I'm concerned, we don't have to pay back the general fund. We went out, out range, and we should. So I would not be far concerned that don't pay back the general fund, because we, we voted out. Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say that this, you know, the obvious, the, the roads are all, they need to be done. They themselves have been pushed back, as have been many, multiple infrastructure projects, including the treatment plant. I mean, for years in a community or a city, we, we sat by and watched the things crumble while we stocked money in the bank. Uh, that's really not good government to me. I mean, we need to take care of the infrastructure. I'm not asking you to spend down the general fund to the nub. There's still eight, nine months in there, which is three points more than mandated. So to, never to move forward with the road crossing plan that we all put together and all approved and all before recommended, I think we should keep on pace and, and do the job just in kind of do. Thank you.
Mayor, please?
Actually, these four streets at one point were unfunded, and I remember pushing for these streets, we, we need to get them done. I mean, by the creek, the ditches are garbage, the water mains are garbage. We're gonna end up paying more in the long run. I can tell you, I was pushing for Royal Oaks all in one year. Yes, we saved the four hundred and twenty thousand. I think, Brad, we still have about, without paying that one point three back, we still have ten months in the general fund, well, pretty much.
It depends on how you round, yeah, about ten.
I mean, if, if we were getting closer to seven months, I'd be a little nervous and be slowing projects down, but, you know, what was it, three years ago or something, we did some patchwork on these streets. That was just money wasted. Couple hundred thousand, and if, if we don't move these projects forward, we're gonna waste more money, and it's gonna cost us more in the long run. I, I say we still keep pushing forward here.
Alman Roy Wesley?
The market is still kinda shaky here, and we could still get good prices on these roads. I think we can. We need to, so, we need to do these roads, what we're supposed to be doing. I've sat up here for four years now trying to fight for roads for my ward. And you know, Ward one, they've got a pretty good portion done. Sometimes even the road was done thr- twice on Central. So now, now it's gonna come up to Ward two, there's getting most of the roads done, and we're gonna say, oh, let's put it on the back burner? Forget it. Let's get it done.
Mr. Jacob?
Couple questions, but I, I am all for getting that done too, I mean, just so you know. Um, page twenty-one, the Wooddale and Irving Park safety improvements, now that it's been pushed off, is it still gonna be in fiscal year two thousand fifteen? Are we?
Mr. Uh, Brad Wilson?
Yeah, the project is still gonna start in, in this fiscal year, um, and not sure how, how aggressive or quick it's gonna go. Um, it, but it is gonna start in this fiscal year for sure. Um, there may be, uh, some bleed over to the next fiscal year. Um, good news, bad news. Bad news is it's gonna go into next summer. Uh, good news is it's, it's all funded through that grant, so it, it's a net effect of zero to the city, so I mean, we could, in the final version, split this up a little bit, um, after we talk to HR Green a little bit more and see if they have a little bit better estimate of the, the timeline on it. Uh, but it's not gonna affect the, the actual, the cash flows, cause it is funded through the grant, so.
Hi, Mr. Jacob?
Thank you for answering that. Uh, question, uh, page twenty-four, the, uh, Ash Street Crossing, uh, safety improvements. Is there a timelit on that, on that money that we're supposed to get, that grant for five hundred ninety thousand? I know the mayor looked into it or talked about that.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking at some of my book here.
I was talking about the quiet zone, that five hundred ninety thousand grant. Is there a timelimit on that grant or anything?
Brad?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, we're not aware of any, um, and we're actually having a kickoff meeting here in the next week or two, and so we'll, we'll get a little more clarity on the project timeline on that as well, but, uh, we're not aware of any, but we are looking to move it forward as quick as we can.
I didn't hear that.
So we are looking at using that money for two thousand fifteen?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor, you have a question?
No, I was just looking at some notes, that's all, I'm sorry.
Are we on, are we going page twenty-five now?
Well, before we start, as far as the ponds, are we gonna get some legal? I wanna make sure, cause I, my fear is, and I agree, those ponds have been a headache for a long time. And I would love to just say, yeah, you know what, let's fix it and get them done.
Mr. Murmerts?
What's the? Well, it's not, it's not taking over maintenance of a private pond anymore if we own the property.
Again, I'd really like to hear from the, so.
He's gonna tell you the same thing.
Okay, so, so, so we take them over, and then everybody else in the city wants to give us their ponds.
Would Si will be in here next?
Right now, we don't own the property. But I, I under, I understand what you're saying. I just don't wanna have to take over every pond.
Well, I guarantee you, I guarantee you, would Si will be here next. I would believe, um, Royal Oaks will be the following one.
Are they gonna give us the property too? They wouldn't.
Well, they may.
No, they wouldn't, cause they, they can't. They can't. There's no physical way they could do it. That's what makes this project unique.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
From a planning standpoint, uh.
I guess we leave.
Steph needs clarification if we're leaving it in or moving it back, or.
We got some legal opinions first, so.
We're leaving it in. We'll get the legal opinion, but we'll leave it in till we get the opinion.
So is that a motion, leave it in there?
I just need to write in a, just direction to leave it in.
Well, leave it in there till we get the legal opinion. So leave it in there. Alright, is everyone in favor of leaving the detention ponds in till we get the legal opinion on it?
As I said, Eugene, you say the retention pond, you just talked about the Elizabeth Park, what about the Potter Street?
No. So yes, leave it in till we get some legal advice.
Alright, so if there's not any other questions on the transportation section?
Transportation.
Yeah, we'll go, if there's not any other questions, we'll go on to buildings and grounds, which is on page twenty-five, the summary.
Okay, any other questions on the transportation?
No.
Okay, so we'll go buildings and grounds, like you said.
Okay, uh, again, same format as transportation, uh, with the six projects in fiscal fifteen, uh, two in sixteen, and then, uh, currently, there's nothing in any of the out years, uh. So this section should, should be pretty straightforward. So this time, we're looking at twenty-five to thirty-two.
Okay, I, I, I have a couple of questions. I'll start out here, unless someone wants. The server room fire suppressions for thirty-five thousand. Let me ask you a question. We did construction in that server room before, we added, right? Is that the server room we added a server to?
Uh, the room in the police department community room was expanded.
And that's where the sprinkler system going?
Correct.
Alright, here's my question. I sit here again, and we piecemealing project together. Why do we not, when we had it drywall all open, putting in all the wiring and everything else, why didn't we put in that? So wanna answer that? I, I, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna have to defer, uh, to IT manager Case on that one, or to Mr. Forrest, cause I know there were, originally, there were three or four different locations. We consolidated down, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Forrest or Mr. Case, uh, on this one.
Mr. Forrest?
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment on that. These fire suppression systems that we're talking about putting in the server rooms are very specialized. They don't involve tying into the sprinkler system or piping. They're typically, uh, self-contained units uh, with a supply tank that has this chemical in it. They're the type of suppression systems that can go off. Uh, they would put out any sort of a fire or some, you know, any sort of a situation like that without damaging the computer equipment. So it is a very specialized system. Whether it was done when the rooms were remodeled, or whether it's done now, it's not gonna be a major retrofit to install those in the rooms.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm just surprised that we didn't go ahead and do it ahead of time. Alright, any other question? I have another question. Someone tell me about this cover parking for twenty-five thousand. I mean, I, I'd really like to know what this is.
I like this.
Uh, page thirty-two is, uh, the project Alderman Wesley's referring to, yeah.
Well, someone's gonna explain why we need this? Who put it in there? Mr. Murmerts?
Greg and I talked about it. We, like I said, it could improve things over there for the moderate costs. It's not like if you eliminate this, you're gonna get some other bang-up project going. So, again, it's something that could help a little. It's not a major thing if we don't have it, but it could help. If you don't wanna do it, we won't do it.
Well, I totally understand it, but my opinion on CIP is it's stuff that we, we need to move forward, but to cover up whatever this may be here, I don't think that should be in the CIP. I mean, all of a sudden, just because we talked about, we throw in the CIP for this year to be done? I mean, if you wanna do that, you might as well take that 25 grand and start funding a project that's been unfunded. Alman Roy Wesley.
This was, I was bringing it up to the chief about this, because if you look at it in the winter, when the squad cars are out in the snow, and there's roll call in between, the cars are gonna fill the snow, and an officer has to go brush the cars off, and you could delay time to go to a call, or whatever. Same thing, it would save underwear and tear on the cars from the sun and from the weather by covering these things on top.
Let me...
So, is, you're not just saving it, you're saving on labor, you're saving it on safety, because a police officer could slip and fall right there by, by the car if there's a little ice there. So, it's not just, and you're saving on the car from the sun beating down on it, too, and the weather.
Mr. Vesta, can I ask you a question?
Don't put him under it. I was, that was my idea, too.
I just have, I just have a question. Mr. Vesta.
Yes, sir.
Chief Vesta. When we have a roll call, we always have squad cars on the street to go on the call. We always have someone on the street to overlap, right?
Someone's always available, yes.
Okay. So, that, that's my argument, brushing off the car doesn't meet that. My, my other question to you, do you really think the sun does damage to those cars?
I'm, I'm not a paint expert, but I'll tell you one, well, I'll tell, I will tell you one thing. The extreme heat, when a car is closed and the electronics inside, it certainly does take a toll on those. I'm not saying that's gonna pay for the cost of the carport, but when we, when that sun is beating down, if a car isn't used, you know, during that shift, it certainly gets pretty hot in there with all the electronics in there.
What, I'll do a follow-up. Have we had a problem since we haven't had a carport for so many years with our electronics on the squad cars?
I don't know. We just replaced, we just replaced a bunch of the computers. Whether that's due to time, whether it's due to exposure, I, I can't say that this is gonna solve those problems.
Well, then, why don't we put carports under the public works trucks, and we put them under the building department, cars that are out there and everything else? They might have to come out for it, too. What? Alman Roy Wesley.
Well, public works is not an emergency vehicle.
Yeah, the water main, right?
Okay? And a water main, yeah, but it's not, it's not going to a robbery, it's not going to someone that needs help like that. The question, the thing is, too, how much is one workman's comp case of a police officer foz on ice and from brushing off the snow and stuff? I think it's gonna be more than $25,000. So, this, hey, it could happen.
Mr. Jacob.
I would listen to Roy Wesley here. I agree that we do need this, and that would be very helpful. But I do have another question. Page 25, Brad?
Yes.
So, the building, public works, city hall, plant maintenance, police, salt, none of these departments or buildings have any work to be done in 2017, 18, 19? There's no other, besides a few projects listed here? Are these the only things we need? It just seems to me like this is, I mean, I understand, we're not gonna put makeup projects in here, but I'm sure public works needs something that could fit in here. I'm sure the police needs something that could be fit in here. So, I'm just kinda asking why those are all left blank, or why we don't have other ideas here.
Go ahead.
Couple things. One, this building in particular, over the last three or four years, has, you know, head tuck pointing, recocked windows, there's been a lot of work done to this building. There are a couple of projects at the public works facility that are being evaluated right now, and part of it is, you know, there's, one of the unfunded projects is that lingering, infamous, you know, new building, no new building. So, one of the projects has been put off for a year to finish the treatment plant to get a better picture of what the 720 facility is going to look like, or is gonna need to look like. So, I don't wanna throw good money after bad if we're gonna do some changes over there in that regard. The police department as well, I don't wanna speak for the chief, but I know a lot of the, the stuff, especially the interior of the building, they've been kinda chipping away at over the last four or five years. So, you know, and most of the gentlemen behind me, you know, they're the ones that, you know, do the upkeep of the building, so they would, they would know. The only other thing that really, you know, this building needs, and actually Alderman Winger mentioned it a few minutes ago, is that curtain wall that's been in and out of the funded section probably four out of the last five years, and is, is sitting in the unfunded section right now. So, that's, that's really the big, the big thing that, that's left on this building, that and the roof that's programmed in here currently.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Mayor, please.
All I was gonna say is, right, we have the unfunded public works, $120,000 for the new floor. Last year, police department requested some desks, about $25,000, that was shot down. If you take a walk through the police department, look at those desks, there's some two-by-fours holding up a couple of them. The finish is gone, it's, you know, they're pretty beat up.
Then forget the canopy and put the furniture.
You, I mean, there's always things, but you have to budget for everything and make decisions here. So, which one do you want first? The, the floor for right now, until we assess, you know, where all the trucks are gonna go once the treatment plant is done, you're not gonna do that floor just yet.
Mr. Woods?
Entry door repair, $30,000 for doors, that just seems like I'll do that for you. That's $7,500 a door.
It's all yours.
Mr. Greg Vesta.
There's four, the high-security entry doors, and the, the frames are significantly rusting to the point of rusting through. I know the mayor took a look at them, too. Be certainly happy to show anyone those. The problem with the way the building was built, according to the contractors we've had out, they're significantly built into the building, it appears, so the, the level of labor, they think is gonna be more extensive. If it comes down to a formal bid to get the people out and look, certainly, this is a high number. I would hope it would come in, I, it's a lot of money, it is, but they do need to be replaced, it's just how deep they are into the building, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jacob.
I was, I was just gonna ask, could we put that, police, I mean, seeing that the mayor has walked down there and said the furniture's in that bad a shape, could we put that into this, the $25,000 or whatever it is? I mean, this isn't, I mean, this isn't of the law here. I mean, we could change this at any time, correct?
Mr. Wilson.
I'll answer the second part of that. Yeah, currently, this is a planning document and, you know, fluid document. Things can go in and out of it at this point, up a year, back a year. And based upon last year's conversation, I'm not going to comment either way on furniture. If somebody would like to comment on furniture, that's fine, but you're not getting any comment from, from this side of the dice.
Well, I'll comment on the furniture. I'd rather get rid of canopy, and if the mayor says the furniture is in that bad shape, have our public works director go out and get the best price he can for the treatment plant. Obviously, you got a good deal on the furniture and the treatment plant, so have them go back and see what we need for furniture. So, I mean, far concerned, that canopy is not, I'm not sold on it, I'm just not. Mr. Roy Wesley.
I'll give you a canopy, too. Chief? How much were the desk?
I believe it was under $20,000. I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head. It was in last year's.
Okay. How about if we take 10 this year, and then put 10 in for next year?
I would agree with that.
And we still keep our canopy?
Wait a minute.
Mayor, please.
Again, comments were made, we piecemeal it together. When you piecemeal it, you're gonna pay more. Do it all at once, you could save some money. Again, I'm not an expert on furniture. I just looked at it, I went to go see the doorways, you know, the chief, I just wanted to see the items that were in here. I, I think they need to be done. Whether we do them both, I mean, it all becomes a budget item. Mr. Wilson will be glad to put any, you know, he'll put in the floor if you want it right now, but then you gotta remember what happens with the funds, with the general fund, so no problem.
Mr. Roy Wesley.
Mr. McYork, since you did such a great job on gaining the prices on, on that before for the sewer treatment plant, how hard is it to come back within the next two weeks with new desk for the police department? Used ones or whatever?
Well, I'm sure that I could work with the chief on giving him my contacts.
That's fine.
And we could probably come up with something for the first committee meeting in February. I would, we could try to get something by then, if not for something after that.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if allowed, we could get the number that was in last year's version, if you give us a second.
But I don't need new desk.
We can, we can get the number that was in last year's draft version, if you give us a second.
Mr. Woods?
Thanks, Brad. That was gonna be my recommendation. Let's just plug that in. If we're gonna do half of it, we might as well do all of it, as the mayor pointed out. It doesn't make any sense, especially the way that offices are configured and the desks are configured, to, to do it all at one time. I'm sure that the information we have will only get better if Matt's guy can get it to us cheaper.
Okay. So, we're gonna look into the furniture, and I really would like to take the roll call as canopy. Well, I really do, I want to know who's the favor of the business there, or take it out. So, on a canopy for $25,000, let's take the roll call. Yes, you want, no, you don't.
How many cars will the canopy cover at, at one time? Is it every squad car that's, that's used?
Yes, as estimated, it would cover the whole, all the cars that are facing northbound that are in the south lot right now. So, that whole line, up until the Sally Port where the prisoners come in. It would cover that area, probably two different sections.
And, and would it, essentially, then, it would cover the entire car, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions to the roll call? Leave it in or not?
Could you start with me?
No.
No.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes, very much needed.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
I, I don't need one.
Yes.
Two yeses.
And I will, I will ask, I will look at, gee, the building department canopy, too, for the city manager.
No, we're gonna take the cars away, so we can pay for the canopy.
All right. To me, it's a wasteful. All right, what else? Oh, wait, call the mayor on that, that vote, too. I wanna see what the mayor has to say. Mayor, what?
He doesn't, he doesn't vote. Next session.
I saw a question on the section we were in.
Too, too late.
Just the fire suppression system, have we already gotten quotes on that?
I believe that's the price. I believe the price that's in there, they got the price already for it, so, is that the price?
Yeah, that was the, a rough estimate off the prices we got a couple of years ago. Those from multiple locations, so it, it's probably the, the highest it would be, probably, probably, it should be less.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Sure.
Oh, wait, did we do 36? Page 36, I missed 36?
Yeah, the miscellaneous section begins on page 34.
On the blue section, on 34?
Correct, on page 34, yeah. Which is the miscellaneous. You can see, next year, there are seven projects in the miscellaneous section, and then on page 35, kind of a runout of the projects over the next few years. So, at this time, we're looking at pages 34 to 46 in the miscellaneous section with questions.
Mayor, you, you wanna go first?
Oh, you know what, we probably have the same one. Page 40, the streetlights. We normally figure $25,000, but we already have, I don't know, four or five lights requested. I think we're gonna need another, I don't know, $15,000 or something on this.
Well, the, let me ask you a question. Is the, I, I agree with that. Is the two for my Tascas Street in here?
They're gonna be in this fiscal year, the one that we're in currently.
So, 2014.
Correct.
So, 2015, we just asked if you, if I wrote it down here?
South Cedar.
South Cedar, one or, one or two, and then this, School Street is two, so you're actually gonna have to up that if that's the case. So, we take the canopy out, and we put it for the streetlights for safety.
Wow.
Go ahead.
Based on historical pricing, those two locations would fit within that $25,000.
Really?
Based on, yeah, correct. Based on the pricing we've gotten the last three installs we've had out of this account.
School Street and South Cedar? Sorry.
So, we will not have another one, so there's no more out there for streetlights that we know of?
No. Not that, I'm broadly aware of, I don't think there's any other petitions out there currently, no.
So, 2015, the streetlights I've spoken for, so if someone comes forward, they would have to wait till 2016, then, if we don't make a change.
Or it could...
Go ahead, Mayor.
Or we could do a budget amendment, but, that's why I'm just trying to save here a budget amendment and discussion, that's all. That's all I brought it up for.
Okay, Mr. Jacob.
I have a question on page 46.
Wouldn't this be in fiscal year 2015 to be in conjunction with the safety improvements on Irving and Wooddale?
Sorry.
As Brad mentioned before, it's kind of in a state of flux. We kind of best guess this may be towards, more towards 16 than the earlier part of the project, so, I mean, we don't really know. I mean, this is the best guess.
Mayor, please. Follow-up on that same one. Isn't that number a little low for burying the power lines?
In some of our initial talks with Kamed about the intersection, we were actually told some good news that with the reconfigurations, they have to do a lot of line work anyway, and we pay the small incremental difference of them putting it underground, so the cost drastically goes down instead of starting from scratch.
Oh, nice. Okay. Mike, Alman Roy Wesley.
Page 37. Eighty, uh, Ash Trees. $85,000 more.
Go ahead, Mr. Mertz.
As we talked about a couple of months ago, the ash tree, getting rid of it's only one part of the problem, and we gotta buy new trees. New trees are expensive.
Okay. I have a, anyone else or? Go ahead. All right, thirty-seven, same question. How much of that stuff we going to contract out? Go ahead, Mr. Mertz.
I think it's pretty much the same as we discussed a couple of months ago, where the diameter of the tree basically dictates whether or not we're gonna outsource it. So I think it was around fifteen or sixteen. We try to do some in-house, some outsourced, but we will be bidding out a good chunk of it this next round.
Cause there's a big chunk. Are we gonna bid it out? Are they that big that we have to have contracted out? Go ahead.
There's some big trees out there. And we also contract out trees that are in suspect locations or dangerous locations.
Alman Roy, Art Woods? Alman Roy Wesley?
Could we, is it possible that we could start looking at buying, usually we go out for bid for trees? Could we look at buying a semi of trees and planting these things ourselves? And we would still get the?
Mr. Mertz.
Maybe Mr. York is as good as finding trees as furniture, so I'll just defer to him.
I know he's probably gonna tell me no.
Matt York.
Currently, the purchase of trees, and I've been in negotiations already with our current tree supplier, getting the trees isn't gonna be the issue so much. Planning the trees, we, I don't believe that Public Works has the time allotment that will allow us to plant trees. There's a lot on our plate right now, a lot of things that we're trying to get accomplished. Tree planting is very specialized work, and none of our guys are, whereas we have arborists that know how to cut trees, they don't know how to plant trees. So I'd like to, to get good trees in the ground and have them stay alive.
Mr. Woods? I think the other issue, I was gonna mention, Matt, thanks, Matt, but the other one is if we have professionals plant it, they're warranting or guaranteeing the tree for two years. I believe that was our conversation with, that Jennifer brought to us at Streetscape. So that would be another reason to have it done outsourced. If we do it ourselves, we lose that warranty or guarantee. So any possible savings would be completely lost.
Mr. Jacob?
On page thirty-six, I'd like to see where are we exactly with this GIS system? We've been talking about this thing forever. Is this all the money we need to spend and have that fully operational? Is this not all that money?
Mr. Mertz.
My favorite topic. System, as many of you may know, it's kind of always able to be updated and improved. You can really add a mapping layer every year if you wanted to. We're getting to the point now where we've got most of the important stuff in there. As the council that's been on board for quite some time can attest to, the expenses for this used to be a hell of a lot more than they are now. It's gone down quite a bit. As you can see, we're pretty much at the tail end, and unless we really wanna start getting crazy with it, it's pretty much wrapping down or winding down.
Mr. Jacob?
At one point, and I don't know if that's a GIS system, we were talking about tracking all the Public Works vehicles, where they're at, where they're at and things. Was that part of the GIS or no?
Mr. Mertz.
I don't recall talking about tracking Public Works vehicles for at least six, seven years. That's definitely not part of what we're talking about here.
Okay, my misunderstanding, I guess.
Mr. Art Woods?
Jeff, so we're not gonna be adding any more layers right now to the GIS? We're considered done, or is that what you're saying?
Mr. Mertz.
No, I don't think we're considered done. I think we're considered winding down the ramped up efforts, mapping the storm sewer system, mapping sanitary sewer. You can map all the stop signs in town if you wanted to, but I think the main infrastructure stuff is winding down. We still have to wrap up trees. Matt, is there, is that pretty much summarized?
We were done with the trees.
Yeah, the tree layer is not complete yet. The tree layers, only thing that's mapped is the ash tree population within our urban forest. So we'd like to have every species of trees mapped. Once that's complete, there are some other opportunities out there, but I think we're gonna take those one, come one at a time. So you may see some GIS stuff in the future, but as of right now, we're gonna ramp, finish this, finish this cycle out and then reassess.
I'm gonna ask a question here, and I, and it goes back to previous meetings that I discussed at a previous meeting. And my statement was that spending money for GIS and if we aren't using it to the capability that we shouldn't be using anymore. My question back to staff here now, we had a discussion about putting on the water trucks where we could start using it. Has that been accomplished yet?
Currently, we are in the process of coming up with policies and procedures on how to use those pieces of equipment. Those pieces of equipment have been ordered and are not yet in here within the city. We are waiting for those, and once those come in, those policies and procedures will be rolled out, and yes, we will start on the water. And the, they came in yesterday. I was just notified by the IT director. They came in yesterday. So they're not in Public Works' hands yet, so we'll be working on those, and getting those out before too long and have some reports back towards the end of this fiscal year.
All right, my other question, I was approached by the fire district. Are they able to tap into our GIS system? Typical example, if the hydrants are buried, are they gonna be able to have access to our GIS system somehow in their vehicles to say, okay, that hydrant's right there was buried in snow, but we gotta dig it out? Is there, is there gonna be a cost on our costs to add on to them? Or, or my question is, do we give them a price, what would cost to add them in for GIS? For emergency purposes, or for if they have a big fire, they could key it up on the computer, this is only a six-inch main. Maybe I need to tap a hydrant down the way. I mean, I'm just asking that question. We talked about working with taxi bodies in the future. This is a perfect opportunity. Mr. Mertz.
Once we, once we have the base map, which we already have for stuff you're talking about, I mean, that's our base map from here until whenever. As far as, I know a lot of, I'll let Nick speak, but I think the mapping is actually on remote servers. I don't know if it's on our stuff. I think it's web-based. So I don't know if there's any user fee implications with that, but I know it's on web-based.
It is web-based. It is stored, not on our servers. It is stored remotely. It is web-based, so it is not stored here. There are web links that it can be accessed by city staff. I can't really speak for whether or not, how we would give the fire department that. I mean, that's probably something we'd have to talk about.
Well, I think we need to talk about that for emergency purposes. I really do. Mayor, please. Yeah, Nick, while you're out here. I know why work, they have something, they limited access for certain things. I mean, they couldn't, they couldn't be added as a limited access, for limited access or something?
Sure. That's a possibility. We have to talk to the vendor. But I foresee that being very possible. They can only see certain layers of that map.
Correct.
Mr. Pete Jacob?
With the GIS again, was, I mean, right now, where could you access that? Is that just that, the Public Works Department computer? Or could anybody in the city access this? Jeff or the PD or?
Mr. Mertz.
Yeah, it's, I can access it. I mean, it depends on your workstation. It's not just Public Works. I mean, I've gone on it before here in my office at City Hall. So it's, you can get it. You can get it mobile. It all depends on, you know, your username, how many licenses, passwords.
Mr. Jacob?
I know we were talking about putting computers in the, all the Public Works cars. Was that for the GIS?
Yes.
And is that still in here somewhere?
Are we done with this section?
Sure, Mr. Woods, if you wanna move on, that's fine. But could I, could I go back to page forty-one then? If you may. Forty-one. I know we talked about this license plate scanning device for twenty thousand dollars. Did the council give the direction, move forward with it, put it in the CIP? I don't remember that. Do we make a motion up here, or do we just throw it in there? Because some aldermen asked for it in there. I'm just asking. Mr. Mertz.
As the finance chair, you should know that anything could be added in here, and then you decide if you want it or not. I mean, staff can make recommendations, council members can make recommendations. Well, vice chair, previous chairman.
So then, so then, let's go back. If I did ask for something to be put in here, and I did ask for several times, and I don't even still see unfunded balance. I believe I talked about sidewalk and hemlock several times by the park over there. We talked about putting a sidewalk over there because we got three sidewalks over there now. And we were talking about putting a sidewalk and on Stonem there, no hemlock, by the park that is the most used by the park district. And I don't see that in there. So aldermen allow, put something in there, and I don't see that in there. There was a sidewalk proposal, the application came in for a sidewalk in the fourth ward. I don't see that in there. So my question is, are we picking and choosing on who gets what in the CIP, or do we not put it in?
Mr. Mertz.
I believe Brad can speak to this. I think the one sidewalk you're talking about was in, and there was some printing thing. He's putting that back in, and the other sidewalk, let's add it in.
Well, I'm just saying.
I love that idea.
Cause I thought we were gonna approach the park district since it, we would have to kinda deal with park districts since it's, because we got sidewalk on two sides of it, and they walk in the street on, so I, I mean, I just like to put that in there. Alman, I mean, Alman Roy Wesley.
Jeff, could you call the, contact the park district and see if they're willing to go a half sun to sidewalk and put in the CIP?
Not a problem.
Mayor, please.
As far as the other sidewalk you were talking about, I think, are we still up for a grant or? Are we applying again because?
My understanding is it's been in at least twice, and it was turned down both times.
Are we continuing to, because I think that wasn't quarter million dollars or something? That was about four years, five years ago.
I'll go back to Alderman Wesley's first question. Since the plate reader was a hotly contested item, how did it miraculously surface in the CIP? That's the best way I can phrase that.
Mr. Mertz.
Same here. You miraculously brought back up the police department furniture. I mean, it's a project. It was a valid project. It's a close vote. Chairs, office furniture is a close vote. We resurrected office furniture tonight.
Maybe we should reconsider.
About the license plate reader, I would just like to, yeah, if I can. Yes, okay. I think, Greg, you heard about, you know, some of the objections to this. Are those pretty much solved now? I mean, I don't mind the reader. I think my, my problem was that if you make an arrest, the twenty thousand dollars sits in our parking lot, now under the canopy, of course. But is that, is that gonna, I guess I just wanna see this thing being used. If we're gonna spend twenty grand instead of spending four hours. So if you can tell me, yeah, there's a policy that you're planning on or moving this around, I'll have no problem with saying yes to this.
Yeah, what I, what I guess I would say to that is depending on the arrest, different amounts of times. You know, a typical DUI is two to three hours. A no-valid arrest is an hour. A warrant arrest could be an hour, it could be six hours. So I think, well, you can't say if it definitely becomes two hours, because then switching someone out of a car and moving and you're wasting more time signing off of all the systems. But if it becomes a long-term thing where the officer's gonna be down the majority of the shift, I mean, we move around people in cars on a regular basis depending on what equipment is up, what's down. And we would certainly make it a priority that if someone's using it and it, you know, they're gonna be tied up for a good part of their shift, that we look to put someone else in there too.
Because my understanding is this license plate reader is to catch the real bad guys. So to me, if you're catching the real bad guys, which is a good thing, real bad guys probably take a while to book.
Certainly.
So that's, yeah.
And, you know, there's some preloaded stuff that comes down on a daily basis from the state, such as people that are suspended or revoked or stolen license plates, you know, that you might wanna look out for. And then there's also databases that we can share where we have intelligence of people that are car burglars, business burglars, people on parole for certain crimes. Sometimes, you know, I think we did about a hundred and five felony arrests last year and several hundred misdemeanor arrests. Sometimes a speeding thing can turn into a twelve-hour arrest because it, you know, leads to something else. But I, I think if we made it a priority that if the officer's gonna be tied up for a significant part of his shift, as watch command, the watch commanders would then have to make sure that they're moving someone else into that piece of, piece of equipment then.
Chief, can this be easily taken out of one squad car and put into another? I mean, is that an easier, like a racket, boom, boom, and stung or?
No, we, we did talk to the one rep, and, you know, we wouldn't have decided yet on the final product. But to, you'd have to add significant infrastructure to each squad to be able to move the camera, because it's tied into the computer system and everything else. So doing it on a daily basis wouldn't be effective. If it was a thing where you could spend some extra money on a couple cars to have them available, it would probably be easier just to switch out cars and have someone else take that car when it's available. So rather than moving the camera, because you're talking wires through the car and everything else, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
I was gonna say, question to Jeff. Even though we keep this in here, this is gonna come to us, we're gonna discuss it. I'm just, in an effort to move it forward, I don't think the chief was ready to debate the issue this evening, nor was I. So we can just leave it in and move forward. I'm sure it comes back to us, correct?
Mr. Mertz?
Alderman Woods is correct. There has been a longstanding history of approving things in the CIP, then doubling back and denying them at council.
Thank you.
Alman Roy Wesley?
Chief, to purchase this, we would use the money from where?
We, well.
We already said we'll leave it in.
Yeah, there, there's probably two sources. One would be through general funds, the other would be possibly the DUI tech fund would be a possibility. There is some money in there too. It could be a, could be a.
Well, we're leaving it in now, so.
Mr. Jacob?
Page forty-three talks about staffing study, organizational staffing study for thirty thousand dollars. Couldn't our department have, I mean, I think Greg knows how many people he needs. I think Matt knows how many people he needs. I think we're gonna hire a consultant for thirty thousand dollars to do this. I'm a little confused on that one.
This is the item that I asked to be put in. And, and here's the reason why, okay? Greg could go ahead and do it. He's gonna come back here and say, I'm doing this study. I want another three offices. I'm doing this study. I want another three officers. Matt could come in. He says, I need another, well, I really don't need these guys, but I'm going to ask for five more guys. Doing the study, the reason why this study is put in there is because we got Elgin O'Hare coming up. We need to know where our staffing is going to be. Okay? If I get the budget come time, that I get the building department, or someone comes in and says, I need a guy, maybe I don't need a guy after the study. Maybe I need it somewhere else. Maybe I need something else. I want to see what we need, because if we're talking about taking over frontage roads, which could be our possibility of plowing those, and moving forward, I want to know where we have to do in, in the future here. We need to start looking at the long end budget. We're doing CIP five years out, we might well start thinking about what we need for personnel. You know, there's guys getting ready to retire here. Maybe we need to hire four guys. I say move forward the study on independent. I think we'll use this study and not put it on the shelf. Mister Jacob.
Um, well, I mean, I, you know, I kind of hate studies, to be honest with you, and I think our department heads are going to know better than an engineer that is not working here. I think these guys are going to know who they need for their departments. I, I can't see an outsider coming in here, spending thirty thousand dollars, and they're going to tell the chief, oh, you need five, five more officers. Matt, you need ten more public works guys. I, I mean, these guys are going to know. They know what's coming down the line.
Mister Woods?
Well, as far as the study, I'd be for the study, and I think that they can shed some light on the subject being an outside source. But given the things you brought up with the Elgin O'Hare, I mean, we're not going to know the answers to those questions for a while. So while I would be in favor of this, I would probably at least move it to 2016 before we actually did the study.
Mister Murmerts?
Uh, I was pondering this myself. I think the mayor also asked this question to me the other day. The reason it's in here now, Alderman Woods is correct, though. I mean, we really, there's still some unknown variables that what we would really need to know before we got the product that we, that we want to get. We may know a good chunk of those variables sometime in fiscal year fifteen, maybe towards the end of fiscal year fifteen. So I wouldn't even think about going out to do this until we have a lot of these variables, you know, that we know.
So let me answer this question, now that you brought that up. This study could take the whole entire year to do. Depends when you do it. My follow-up with that, then, are you telling me right now, when the budget comes, that no department's coming here with personnel? Because that's the reason. Go ahead.
Why, you're, you're talking about two different things.
No, I'm not.
You kind of are. There is, first of all, the study's not going to take a year. That's for sure. Well, I am telling you, it's not going to take a year. The second thing, as far as the budget process and new employees, that would be independent of the study. If a department had, like Alderman Jacob is saying, right now says there's a need for an additional employee within the department, separate from this other study, then perhaps we don't have to wait until the study to suggest that employee, and then you guys make a determination if you want to hire that employee or not. So to sit here and guarantee you that we're not going to bring a reduction of an employee, or an addition of an employee before the study would be foolish, and that's probably not the case.
But the problem is, if we go ahead and had, if we go ahead and hire employee in the budget, and that department, whoever we hired in there, that study comes back and says, hey, you don't need that many employees, now I'm going to stick on, I already paid for his, you know, we already paid his salary for a year, and now I'm going to give him a pink slip and say hit the road? I mean, I don't think that's fair. That's why I'm saying, we need to do this study now. I mean, we.
That's why you're the decision makers. Tell us what you want us to do.
I say leave the study in. Alderman, lose your police. Mayor police.
Same, same thing here. If we leave it in, it's going to come forward to the council before we pass anything, and let's face it, we need to find out what some of those variables are. I know we tried to bring this, the manager, two and a half years ago, wanted to check over the public works department, and the council kind of put the kibosh on that. And actually, the gentleman that the manager wanted to hire is actually doing the county right now. Is that correct, Jeff?
Mister Murmerts?
That's correct. I mean, the organizational study, it can't help in going, going from an outside firm is, is less biased. Like Alderman Woods said, you can, it's kind of hard to criticize yourself sometimes, so. But as far as hiring and recommending reductions or additions in the budget process, if the council decides that they don't want to do it until after the study's done, then that's the way we'll go.
Mister, Alderman Roy Wesley?
I can't believe I'm talking about a study for staffing when I can't get a canopy.
I got the canopy.
I understand that. I think that the study needs to be done, because I think with the Elgin O'Hare, we don't know how much traffic that's going to bring. We don't know if it's going to be more work for the building department or anything else. The timing of it, I'm not sure on that, on it. When is, when there's, when are the buildings coming? When is the building department going to be busy? No one could truly answer that yet. So I still would like to leave it in, but I'm not clear on the date, on the year there.
Mister Jacob.
Um, just in comment to what Mister Roy Wesley just said, if we don't know, how's an outside company going to know? I mean, if we don't know the variables, how's some company we hired to give us a study going to know the answers to that?
Mister Woods?
I'm going to have to pull the, it comes back to us anyway. We can take it out, so in an effort to move forward. The mayor already stated this, so I'll give him credit for that one. We can move forward.
Mayor police.
Right, like the manager just said, he's not going to bring it forward till he knows more of the variables. And that might not be till August, September, or this time next year. He's not going, he's not going to do anything until he knows. So we need the variables, and once he's ready, it might not even happen in this fifth fiscal year coming up. If he's not feeling comfortable, he's not going to do it. So if it's in there, it doesn't matter.
Moving forward, are we done with this section?
Can I?
Excellent question. As long as there's no other questions on the miscellaneous section.
Wait, let's, let's go back to miscellaneous for a minute.
Okay, we never left?
The GIS thing, and I guarantee you, it wasn't seven years ago, we talked about putting in a lot of all those trucks. Figure out where the trucks were at.
GPS.
GPS, I'm sorry, GPS.
I know it was earlier than that. It wasn't seven years ago. Right? Mister Murmerts?
I am pretty sure the GPS on the trucks was in 2006. I'm pretty sure.
Whatever it is, okay. My point is, I still want to revisit that in the CIP. Because here's the reason. I want to know where our public works trucks are going. I want to know where everything else. We got them on squad cars. Why is that department different than any other department in the city? We know exactly where all our squad cars are located at, at any given time. And it's not a thing to nickel and dime the guy, oh, well, you were out of district, you were here. Okay? I think it should be even in the building department's cars. Why are we getting them on squad cars and not in the whole entire city? So my question is, put it back in there, find out what it costs, and put it in the CIP. Because, you know what? It ain't fair that one department has it and the other departments don't have it. We pay, the city council approves cars, and I think our staff, our department managers know where those cars are going at all times.
Mister Murmerts?
Look at him.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what the council thinks is important, we'll get some costs, and we'll put it on in there.
Mister Jacob?
I would have to agree with Eugene Wesley on this. Although I'm not a big fan of studies, I have read studies done with like, other companies that have GPSs in them, and it actually has helped efficiency for those companies.
Mayor, any hand up, we're going to.
Okay, so we're going to put it in? Are we good with this?
Mister Police has a question.
As far as the GPS, I mean, if the council wishes to go forward, as we replace the cars, I don't think we have to retrofit every car. As we replace cars, wouldn't that be?
Talking about trucks, everything, across the board.
Trucks, whatever, I, whatever. I mean, otherwise, you're going to have to, and I don't know what the process is to put them in each car, but.
We'll, yeah, exactly. We'll find out.
They got them on the snow trucks in Chicago, so.
Right.
Okay, and then the other miscellaneous that actually, what's the, I don't see in our, our miscellaneous here, is our city sign is, it's been broke. And then what about the sign that we already took out of storage that we probably won't put back on the street? So.
Where is that in the CIP, or does it not go under the CIP?
The two signs you're referring to, the, the first sign outside city hall, we're not sure if it's broke or not. It's just been out. We've called for service. They're coming in. We don't have a determination yet. If the sign's broke, I would guess it's not fully broken. We'll be able to get it operational again. The second sign that's been down for quite some time, adjacent to the treatment plant facility, we know is not going to be able to go back in its current location, and I believe the streetscape committees working, or will be working on shortly, some ideas on the topic you're talking about.
Should this be even said, you wouldn't that fall, you would say?
Well, there's no, there's never been any mention of buying a new sign. Our sign works here, so I don't.
What there's been talked about on this council, about when we took the sign down at the public works, treatment plant that we were going to replace, there's been talk about that. So again, I think, why isn't that, it's, Mr. Murmerts?
Again, if we want to purchase a new electronic sign and put it back by the treatment plant, I was under the impression that there was nowhere to put it back over there.
Mister Woods?
That's correct. That was the issue. There is no room to put that sign back there. I mean, so as part of our sign program, we'll be looking throughout the city for locations and stuff, but I don't think that we've addressed anything specifically to put that sign back. And that is one of the things on the agenda, streetscape.
I, we can move forward on that.
Uh, sure. Moving forward to page forty-eight and forty-nine are the two summary pages for the water and sewer CIP. As you see in 2015, there are ten projects. Most are familiar. There's a couple newer ones on there. And then again, you know, going forward, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, there are other projects that come, come in through there. A few of the projects, as you go out, do tie back to the road resurfacing program in the transportation section, specifically the middle road water replacement. That does tie back to the resurfacing. And there's a couple other smaller items that tie back to the resurfacing program as well, so it's all synced up. So that, as was mentioned earlier, we're not doing a road twice in a five-year span, or, you know, ripping a path of it this year and half of it next year. So to the extent that's possible, there's a linkage between the water, water programs and any resurfacing or stormwater programs.
Page fifty-six, the water main on Irving Park Road, that is for the safety improvement that we're going, is that a partial that we're going to be replacing? Mister Murmerts?
Yeah, this is for the water main within the project boundaries of the intersection, and this is our share of the federal money.
Well, again, should that be, I'll ask tonight, should they go back to 2016, push that back, going that we have to, that's not part of the grant money?
Again, I mean, fifteen, sixteen, it could.
Well, if you end it starting to 2015, late 2015, that would free up two hundred thousand dollars, like we're doing something else, maybe. Alderman, I mean, you.
The, the water main might end up coming up in March of fiscal year fifteen, so it would be under this, under this fiscal year. Because they might, you know, being there, being pushed back, still, the water main's probably going to be one of those parts that's going to be, you know, they're going to do water mains before they start moving the curbs and all that.
But, well.
So it could, it could be in March.
I, I have no problem with that. But my concern now is, why didn't we, and we talked about replacing a whole entire water main along Irving Park Road. Again, Elgin O'Hare, we budget in, in, in capital project, 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019. Why did we not do the same there? Because I know this council talked about replacing a whole water main because we had massive breaks on them, left and right. So my question to, I have no problem leaving it there in 2015, if that's the plan. But if we're going to deduct everything else out, and this is a project ongoing, that we need to deduct it out for 2016, get a price, 2017, 2018, 2019. It's the same thing with burying the comm ed lines. We talked about burying the comm ed lines, and my biggest concern about burying comm ed lines is, yeah, we only going to do that certain section. Okay? And my biggest argument, if you're going to spend a hundred thousand, or whatever it's going to cost to, to bury those comm ed lines, that why don't we get a price and do a capital project for the next five years to bury all the lines? Because I will tell you, if this council changes, and I'm sure it will change in the years down the line, it should be in the CIP stretched all the way out, the capital projects stretch out to 2019. So those big projects that we have talked about in the past, about burying the lines eventually down the whole entire Irving Park Road, should be deducted out for always 2019. It's the same thing with the water mains. But you predict it out, Elgin O'Hare for the next five years, so a big ticket like that should be predicted out for the whole five years.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Need some clarification on page fifty-three. It says north treatment plant. It says, more work to existing clarifier and work to existing sludge building. Are we, isn't, I mean, is that part of this project? Mister, Matt?
Um, yes, this is a work to be done to existing structures that are not being affected by the treatment plant rehabilitation project. So this is like for the annex building, which is not being touched. We have some repairs that we need to do over there. There's some electrical work that needs to be done. And the, the existing clarifiers that we have that are not being removed, need to have some work done to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Because on that, on that situation with the treatment plant, we only budget for so much, and some of that stuff is still in play. That wasn't worn out enough to replace it, that we had a lifespan, a longer lifespan. That's why we eliminated out the CIP, uh, treatment plant. Mayor police?
Page sixty-one, INI study. I know we've been told that, you know, we need to fix our inflows and infiltration and everything. I think we're what, a third of the way? And Brad, I, I called you just to give you a couple of questions. Hopefully you got some answers. We're about a third of the way in. Basically, what's the status of this first, what was it, four sections we've done? And do we see the improvements? I mean, we're spending four hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred thousand a year. Are we seeing benefits for this? I mean, are we starting to see the benefits? I'm just curious, because it's a lot of money.
Matt, you take here, or Brad?
Brad, do you want to start, or I can go in? Yeah, Mister York and I, after talking to you, had some conversations about it. I know he has been in contact with the representatives at RJN, and so he does have some more detailed information about it than I, than I do. He's closer to it than I am. But yeah, it is, it's a twelve-year program. We're currently in year four of it, so yeah, we are a third of the way through.
Right. And the reason I'm asking is, I mean, yes, it sounds like something we had to do, everything, but now it's become like automatic in the book here. But we're really having received any update on, it's, it's working. Hey. haven't received any update on if it, it's working. Hey, it's really working. It's helping us out at the treatment plant when it rains or some, or if it's even fully completed.
The, uh, right now, we're, the next year, we're gonna start area four. Um, areas one, two, and three are still, um, there's still projects that are being completed in each of those areas. Um, about eighteen percent of what they're stating is, um, issues of infiltration and inflow into the system are public. The other eighty-two percent are private. Um, the private aspect of it, obviously eighty-two percent of water being infiltrated into the system is from private residents. Um, that's the people that have some pumps that are illegally, um, connected to sanitary sewer system, um, and those things. Going through and doing the eighteen percent over a twelve-year period is only gonna give you a small, um, portion of change on an any given year basis. Plus with the increase, um, what the change has done at the treatment plant, to be able to say, yeah, we have a twenty percent reduction in infiltration and inflow at the treatment, you know, coming into the treatment plant, I don't think that's something that we can give you at this time. Um, until we can get the treatment plant up to, um, operating standard and making sure that, um, we can have some sort of way to figure out the, um, wet weather flow versus a dry weather flow.
Matt, you, you mentioned so about eighty-two percent is the residents. Now, I know some residents refuse to let us in, and let's face it, some people buy houses not knowing that the previous owner illegally hooked up. And I, and this isn't about fining residents and, you know, but just correcting the problem. Have we been able to correct the problem in these basically three or four years? Cause you just said it's not completed. I mean...
As of right now, and I'm looking at my, my reports that I'm, uh, received from RJN, um, they're still trying to complete, um, area, uh, two and area three, um, of getting into the residence and making sure that the residents, um, that we do inspections of their some pump discharges, and making sure that those some pump discharges are, are disconnected from the sanitary sewer system and either, um, overland flow, um, or connected to this, to the storm sewer system. Um, so that is, right now, their goals for fiscal year fifteen is to do, um, private inspections, um, second and third round, and then finish area three. So once area three is done, then they would move on to area four, um, after the smoke testing and stuff has been taken. There.
So if we're not completed with the first sections, why are we moving forward and put out another five hundred thousand in limbo? Half a million dollars, it's a lot of money, and we're not finished with the first sections. Shouldn't we finish first before we give this firm another job?
I guess I would, uh, take that back to you as a council. Um, I guess as public works, we would be fine with, um, with that assumption, um, that to finish up, uh, sections one, two, and three, um, and then that upcoming year, and then delay, uh, the start of area four into the next year.
Yeah, I'm just looking for results, that's all.
Mr. Woods.
Matt, when you say, when you say they're not done with those sections, we paid them for those sections? They're still working? They haven't gotten it out? What does that mean?
When they, when they provide the service, they are paid. So, um, they're saying for next year, uh, they gave me their, their cost breakdown. A hundred and thirty thousand is for the project engineering costs, and that includes, um, corrective actions in area two, the finish of the dye testing in area two, finish of the, the beginning and finishing of the dye testing in area three. So they haven't done, they haven't completed those tasks in areas two and three, but there's, that's still part of the, of the dollar amount that is, that is in FY fifteen's budget. So if they didn't complete it in FY fourteen, we're not gonna pay them the five hundred thousand because they didn't provide the service.
Mr. Woods, do you have a follow-up on it?
I do, I do. Part of it's to the, uh, Mr. York's comment that, you know, the city council can do what they want, but we're kinda relying on you to give us the information. So if it doesn't seem like it's working, needs to be slowed down, adjusted, modified, that's what we're looking at from you to tell us. We're not here to.
Well, I mean.
Run that department. So if there's some question that we're not getting the value, or we need to push it down the road a little further so that we can catch up and, and really see what we're getting, cause it sounds like, like you said, the thirteen or eighteen percent that we can improve, which is private sector, meaning repair the piece of pipe, or the manhole, or tuck point something, right, or seal that. The other, whatever's left, seventy, eight, eighty percent is those pipes hooked up. So we've, I'm, I assume that in those sectors where they ran the smoke tests and stuff, they know the houses, but we're not able to do anything? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, I mean, if we are not able to get into the houses after first, second, and third, um, tries by the, um, by the engineering firm, then, um, that, and that, that's the problem, not being able to get into the homes. Um, so I guess, um.
So not to cut you off, not to cut you off though, then that's a perfect case where we need to slow down going to the next section. Cause if we can't solve the problem in the first section, there's nothing to lead me to believe that we're gonna solve it in section five, six, seven, and eight. Am I, is that...
Well, moving on to sections, moving on to section four will allow us the opportunity to, um, do the sewer televising, um, do the manhole inspections, be able to get some of the private stuff, or, excuse me, the public stuff done in those areas, which will reduce, um, which would, will, will reduce the amount of INI that we have, um, in that area.
And I get that, but by a smaller percent. So I'm saying maybe we need to revisit what it is we're doing, cause, you know, it doesn't seem, as the mayor was alluding to, that we're getting the bang for the buck, the half a million dollars a clip a year.
I mean, we'd be more than happy to go back and, and reevaluate this, uh, this program. I mean, obviously, this was a twelve-year program, um, so we can, we can obviously go back and make adjustments to that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm going to ask a question on this. Do we have any, was this a, when we signed this contract with them, was this a twelve-year contract on this project, or was that year by year? Okay.
It's just on a scope by scope. It's not like they're a firm in perpetuity.
No, but what I'm saying is, I don't remember, seeing up here, I don't remember coming back when all the contracts extend the second phase, unless I missed that somewhere.
No, I, I, I think we did. Um, the, the one thing, I mean, I don't wanna say I'm not a fan of the INI. I mean, cause it really doesn't matter, and we have to do it anyway, but I'm really not a fan of the INI because it doesn't produce a ton of results with the private residences. Those are always the most pain in the butt ones to get done. If we go from, let's say we're in zone two, and we're only getting thirty percent compliance with people changing over, we're probably never gonna get that other seventy percent. And if we don't go from zone two to zone three, then we're not gonna pick up the thirty percent there. So in one aspect, we kinda do have to move forward, but in another aspect, it's, it's a fine line. It's difficult, cause you're never gonna get the...
But I.
I'm not advocating, you know, going full speed ahead.
I kinda agree with the mayor and Mr. Woods here. If they aren't done with those two phases right now, we need to pull that back.
I agree one hundred percent. What I'm saying is you may never get done with those two phases.
Well, I understand, but you could go ahead and spend all this money, and we may not get any of it done.
You're right.
So my point is, I'm in favor of pulling it back a little bit. Mr. Woods, and then I'll go down the line. Oh, I'm sorry. Christine Winger ran up first. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I don't think so.
I think so.
Go ahead.
I am in favor of pulling it back, especially in light of our conversation, and it, uh, man, is there a way to, um, scale back any of the, um, initial work on the zone four and just complete one, two, and three, and then we can look at how successful that was in sections one, two, and three, before we go on to any other sections or zones? How would that work if we did that?
Yeah, I believe, uh, I could have the discussion with RJN to, um, um, give me a proposal on just finishing, uh, what the projected cost would be to just finish, uh, areas one, two, and three for the, in the upcoming fiscal year, and then move on to, uh, so, and then, and then come back with what the proposals would be for the next year, if that's what the rest of the, uh, Christine gentleman would like.
So we'll, we'll go around the line now.
Okay. Yeah, and that's my suggestion.
Mr. Woods.
Given everything we learned here, I'm not necessarily saying that we pull it, but, I mean, we've just agreed that we're not getting a bang for the buck. So we can't solve seventy percent of the problem supposedly, but we're paying, we're purchasing the potential solution for that and paying dearly for it. Can we purchase less of that work and just have them televise the pipe, find out where the cracks are, what manholes we need to tuck point, and, and, and those things, the things that we can affect, so that the amount of money we would save in the study probably would pay for the repairs?
Well, that, that's, that work has already been done for sections one, two, and three. The major construction cost, um, is the, the lining of the pipes and other work that needs to be done. That's where the big ticket comes in. That, I mean, their estimate for next year is, uh, three hundred and ten thousand for rehabilitation construction. So that's the big ticket. So if, if we go through and all the pipes are good to go, and there's not a whole lot of things that need to be done, then that cost point goes from, you know, four hundred and twenty-five thousand to, to a very small number. Now, obviously, we've got four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars tied up in, in this project, if this moves forward as, as printed. So.
Well, I, I get that, but my, my point is that we're, that there has to be some time, manpower expended, knocking on, sending engineers to knock on doors three times over certain period of time. So if we, before we even knock, I mean, we know which houses are discharging, right? And, and we just can't get to them. So if, if we can't, or if we do, and we can't make them do anything, do we need to expend that money, is my question?
Mr. Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, unfortunately, I think the, like Matt said, the big chunk comes from the residential component, so it's just, uh, it's just a bad situation, but you know that you're probably not gonna accomplish your goal, the residential situation, but we do have to investigate. But I, I do think we should go back and reexamine this. I mean, we knew this was gonna come up. We've talked about this. If you've noticed, these numbers are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars scaled back. Seventy-five thousand dollars scaled back from previous years in every budget year. So we already knew that we needed to make some adjustments, so I, I think you guys are right.
Well, this, and this was the debate we had with getting into the house and getting people to comply. I think that Mr. Forrest was involved in that debate, and that was always our question. Will, how much can we, how much can we get? How many, how much of the correction can, can we get to occur with the residential part? Thanks.
I'm Roy Wesley, you have a question?
No.
Matt, you just said about, you know, if while they finish this work, we're gonna be paying them. My question is, these contracts, as we did them, were not to exceed amounts. So did we finish paying them for like section one and two, and now they're gonna start the next contract and start making, when they haven't finished the first contract? If, if we paid out anything, any one of the three contracts in full yet, as far as the engineering costs? Cause it sounds like, I don't know. The, the one we're gonna do for fiscal year fifteen, that seventy-five thousand that's up there, design engineering, we're still paying on the first three, or, we're not, we, I'm sure we're not going over the not to exceed amounts, correct? How, how do these guys work in this stuff?
Wilson, did Carrie answer the question? If, if they've been paid out of four for phase one and two?
And three.
And three? Have they, have they not?
Sure. Um, to be perfectly honest with you, I, I will have to put that in a report for you probably tomorrow or next week at next week's committee meeting. Um, my presupposition would be that since they're not done with the areas, um, we should not have paid them all out, or if they are, they're working for free.
But you don't know.
But I, I don't know, sitting here right now, currently, no.
Christine Winger, do you have any more? Mr. Jacob?
Just a couple of things on this. Um, I would agree with the sentiment of whatever Beadell's is saying here. You said three hundred and ten thousand, did, did you mean three fifty, or did that number change?
Yeah. Well, that, this number that I have from RJN, they were working off their, um, pre-assumed, um, budget of five hundred thousand, which would have been what they had, had had last year, the year before. Um, they were, I received this report on January eighth. Um, at that time, I did notify RJN that five hundred thousand was not gonna happen, um, that we were gonna reduce their, their funding level somewhere between four to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not knowing exactly what we were gonna do at that time. And, um, at that time, we also just decided to hold off on, um, future estimates until we, uh, got more direction from the board.
Pretty much feeling the same way, as far as, um, maybe just doing the public study for the next, uh, few phases, but let's definitely finish one, two, and three.
So with all the conversations here right now, in order to move forward, the CIP to get approval, that all is gonna have to be reworked. I mean, cause I, I'll tell you one thing, I'm not going, I mean, we, we are at the end of the CIP right now, and it's up for the items that funded. So I'm not willing to make a motion on this floor to approve the CIP until those numbers readjust. So, I mean, that's, that's vice chair of finance, so. Mayor Police?
I don't think we need to hold up the motion on the CIP. I mean, we can get the results. This is gonna come, come back to us at budget time anyways, and we can then decide. We should have the information, the results, how many homes have not allowed us in, or whatnot.
Then my question is, why are we even going over to CIP if everything's coming at budget time? I mean, that's a whole purpose to put those numbers into the budget.
So they can work the budget.
Right. So again, until that change, like next week, we got a CIP meeting again to discuss this, or whatever. Until those changes are done here, I'm not in, in favor of making a motion to approve the CIP until those changes, and I can see those numbers in, in hard copy.
I'm Roy Wesley.
You're, you're only talking about this one, right?
And all the other issues we added up. There was several. There was several issues that were discussed tonight in the CIP.
They can be discussed next week.
Well, why don't we?
I mean, a lot of the issues we've already talked about. I've got, uh, I don't know, at least five bullet points. You know, we can make adjustments to the numbers. We already allocated next week, the fifth Thursday, for some more CIP discussions, so.
Will you have our discussion today that we had all those changes we wanted, will you have that ready by next week?
What five things are there? What five things are there?
I don't know. I'm waiting to find out. Yes.
You know, I don't wanna commit a hundred percent, but most of them, um, and we'll corroborate our notes, but most of them look doable by next week. I mean, I'm not gonna say we're gonna have it in the packet tomorrow, um, but by next Thursday, we, we would have updates.
Because based on our budget that they're putting together, it is going based off of the changes that we have just made in, in the CIP. So we need to finalize this in order for them to put the numbers together for the budget to discuss. So as of tonight, I'm, I'm not ready to make a motion to approve this.
Well, I'm Roy Wesley, do you have any?
Mr. Murphy, what five things do you have on there? You said five, right?
Go ahead.
I'm sure, uh, combining my notes with Brad's, we got them all. I've got ponds, uh, pending the legal opinion. We've got the PD furniture. Um, we've got some potential sidewalks with the park district. We have the GPS with the PW vehicles. We have the analysis on the RJN, and we have the, uh, reinclusion of the Edgewood side, Edgewood sidewalks and unfunded.
Okay. Okay.
And then the headlock sidewalk?
He had that.
Yeah, that's what the Park District.
Now, we, now we know of what we talked about here. Can't we just approve of those things? What, what Mr. Murvis has to work on still is those, those five things. But the rest of it, we could approve. At least they can move forward and put their numbers in the budget.
As a vice chairman of the finance committee, I don't have a final say here. I recommend, until we see those numbers, here we go again, piecemealing half of the budget, CIP together and not the other.
But you're stopping them from moving forward.
Well, I'm not.
Brad, how tough would it be? I mean, those minor things, the only, the one that's probably given you pause is the I and I study issue? Or is it just, the other ones are, are fairly simple, I would think.
Yeah, the I and I study, and just, I, I don't know if, what the staffing level at the Park District is, if they'd be able to, to commit to an IGA with us on a cost share.
That ain't going to happen in under six months, I can tell you that. Going through the school board and the Park District with the parking lots.
Yeah, and the, and the GPS tracking, you know, I mean, we can get a, a rough number, probably like a per, a per-vehicle cost or something. Then we'd have to figure out which ones are, are capable of handling it now, and, and how that would be scaled over the next few years, so.
And then what would you do? Print, like, a supplemental sheet to this? You're not going to reprint the whole booklet next week, right?
Correct, it'd be like what we did last year in the budget. We had the gold sheet in the budget that had all of the changes on it. So, yeah, it would be a supplemental sheet and just an update. Yeah, I wouldn't look for going through this entire exercise again next week. It'd just be those five or six.
Right, just go through the five or six things. So that would make, we're good then? That, that'll be okay to?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah. We didn't.
Brad, would it help you if we approved this tonight, with the exceptions of the five, I guess, budget items that we asked you to, to look at? Will this move you along in others? We say yes tonight. Let's approve this upon the five different budget improvements, if you want to say.
Not to be, to be vague or noncommittal, but it, it would, because we can lock some of the stuff in. But it wouldn't, because anytime you change one number in the budget, it changes thirteen sheets. So if you're going to.
So it doesn't really matter?
It doesn't really matter, yeah. We, we had already planned on having to, of getting it approved next week. So doing it this week or next week is really immaterial to the process at this point.
Mr. Jacob?
I have two questions unrelated to all this other stuff. Page fifty-seven, the Mill Road water main replacement. Have we, it sounds like this can't even happen without ITASKA, so have we even talked to ITASKA about this?
Well, this is one of those components in the CIP where it's, it's, we know we're going to need an IGA, but no, we haven't reached out to them yet, because it's not even next year yet. I mean, it's two years out before we even have to do engineering.
Well, I realize that, but I mean, if we're going to put it in there, we should at least just kind of let them know ahead of time. I mean, otherwise, it's no sense in having it in there.
When we get to it, we can get to it. It's, it's not even towards the middle of my list right now.
Go ahead.
Page fifty-nine, the replacement of water tower one. I know this is far out, too, but is this going to be a bigger tower, or?
Yes.
How is it going to reduce, or it says, balance the water pressure? What's going to be different about this tower than the existing one?
Current water tower one is a extremely small water tower. Really not even, except for it being there, it really doesn't serve a whole lot of purpose. We do need to make this new water tower quite a bit bigger. That will help us regulate the balance of pressure between the two areas of town. So because of the elevation change between that tower and tower, the tower on the north side of town, this one's going to have to be quite a bit bigger. So obviously, it's a little ways out in the planning project, though.
Since we're, since we're brought up the towers, I mean, we have some information on that stuff that can maybe be given to the Alderman, wasn't on the board at the time. But the debate here was repainted, cost of about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, and that's good for another, what was it, fifteen years, or twenty years? Because we also had the tank tower checked, and really has another twenty-five year life on it. As far as the water pressures, they, they said, right now, we're good. But this would help it make it better, and maybe help out some pumps.
Yeah, this would, this would be overall better for the system.
But there was a lot of technical information at that time. Maybe we might have that somewhere that we can pass along.
Yeah, there was, there was actually a study done before Alderman Jacob was on the council. That's right, he doesn't like studies. If he likes studies, I got a study for you. I can get it to you.
Let me, okay, let's go to page sixty-two right now and wrap this thing up for the night.
I got something about ITASKA.
On, go ahead, Alman Roy Wesley.
Jeff, why don't you contact ITASKA now about looking at that, since they don't want to share projects and stuff, since we haven't had a meeting with them for a while? I mean, it's going to take them a while to get going here.
If it's only on the middle of my priority list, I can guarantee you it's on the bottom of their priority list.
I understand that, but if it's in the middle of yours, by then, by time it gets to your top, it might be in their middle, and then they might be thinking of it. So.
I like that.
We're a little faster than ITASKA.
I, page sixty-two. The Public Works concrete floor is going to remain unfunded. Am I correct? Is that what we're doing? Is that the census here? So that is a census. Alman Winger?
So it's, are they in, like, tripping hazard mode, or what is the condition of them right now?
The, the condition of them is that they're in fair to poor condition. Mainly, there are concrete floors that have had salt on them for a long period of time, which has caused pitting and poacking of them. This project, if we, if the Public Works facility, the next item on the budget is not moved forward in the next couple of years, then we would push for, push for those floors. But, I mean, it's quite, it's a quite a, it's, it's an expensive process, so. They're not, it's not a safety hazard. It's, they're not perfect, but we can deal with them.
Thank you.
So that's staying unfunded. Alman Jacob, are we, is that regarding that one?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so that's, that's staying unfunded. The new Public Works facility, that is staying unfunded at this time, until we find out where we're going? Until we find out where treatment plant's done? So we'll consider that down the line? So this year will be unfunded, unless, so. Mr. Jacob?
If we're kind of looking at scaling back on the I and I study, that shows four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That almost covers the Public Works concrete floors and the City Hall window replacement. So couldn't we put those in if we're going to scale back on the I and I, or no?
But we just talked about looking at sidewalks and everything else right now. I mean, far I'm concerned, the floor, we heard it from the Public Works Director, getting a safety issue right now. If it was a safety issue, I would say funded already. We added other projects in there that we just talked about tonight. So that money needs to be earmarked for those projects that we just talked about. We talked about the two sidewalks. We talked about furniture for police station now, or police hall. I mean, don't, we've got to find out what the dollar amount are there. We talked about adding more money for stretching the water main on every park road. So until those numbers come back, I don't feel comfortable moving forward unfunded budget until we find out what those numbers are. Mr. Woods? But that's the council's decision, not mine.
Of course. One of the other things is, in there, as Matt pointed out before with the I and I, that some of the bigger repair costs are coming up. So I don't know how much we'll be able to chop out of it if we're relining a lot of those pipelines, so. We might not be getting initially the biggest savings, or, or biggest savings that we were thinking of in the next year with, with that being in there. Maybe the following year, I don't know. Just.
So we all on board for that? The other, the other one is, sorry, the windows again? That's been in there for so many years. We're going to not fund that. And then the other, and then the other item that we're going, not fund, that we'll look into is the salt dome again? We'll look at that again, bring those numbers back in, and unfund that balance? Because I, is everyone in favor of looking at the salt dome, or not even funded, not even put it in the non-funded item? I mean, we ain't going to waste our time if we aren't going. Look at? Mr. Frank Pizarro?
Didn't we look at that before and, and found a, a price that made us all kind of gulp? I mean, I don't know if it changed or any.
I'm not going to get into debates since I.
Oh, no, it's not a debate, but I know we, we talked about it.
The location, when the council approved it at one time, it went in full session.
We approved the salt dome out here in open session. We went back door, and we had the plan all drawn up, the location, the property that was handed to us, and all of a sudden, just killed a deal.
Does anybody remember what that number was?
Well, I know it was a little over six, all right?
Six fifty.
Six fifty?
Yeah.
But that's counting the property, the road that we agreed put in, the, and all that. So that plan is still out there. Mr. Murvis?
One, one of the other thoughts behind the salt dome was to incorporate the salt dome with the new Public Works facility. That was when we were considering the new Public Works facility, looking at sites, we were looking at sites with the size requirements to also add a salt dome. So that was one of the things there. So the salt dome is kind of still in the CIP in a way, because we always envisioned the new facility as a dual salt dome as well.
All right. All right, anything else?
So we're putting salt dome in?
No. Does anyone else want to add anything to this list that's not funded and is on their wish list? Okay? What do you want?
Go ahead, Mayor, please.
I just want somebody to fix the Formica here in front of Alderman Wesley.
That's fifteen thousand.
It's coming, it's coming apart.
Okay.
The, the police department's ahead of them.
Go ahead, Brad.
Just to verify, the Edgewood sidewalks, we're going to put back in the unfunded, and the number from last year was two eighty, two hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand was the number we had last year. So we're, we're going to put that back in the unfunded section?
You are putting it in the unfunded section?
I mean, that's where it was, and it, it, so it didn't print, so where it's living currently.
How much was that number?
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Two eighty?
Unless there's direction to fund it, but it.
There may be direction to fund it, though.
Live where.
Get rid of the cardboard, maybe. Anything else? All right, I'll make a motion. I don't think I have anything else.
One of the, one of the.
Go ahead.
Just, and I, I think I mentioned this before, just so everybody's aware, I mean, there's not going to be a lot of information disseminated about those five items in the packet tomorrow. It'll be Tuesday or updated, or maybe even Thursday, you know, Thursday. So just, just so everybody's clear about, about that.
I'll, I'll obtain a motion to adjourn, I mean, the next item on the agenda is item to consider future meeting, the TIF proposal in February. Jeff, anything else? Something else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.